Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 13, 2017, 6:30 meeting of the Titusville City Council. We have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Is there a minister that would like to do the invocation for us this evening? Come right up. That was passed around there, wasn't it? Come right up to the microphone, sir. If you'd like to introduce yourself, please.
Dustin Sam's the executive pastor at Grove Church. Could you press that button right there? While I speak?
No, no, just press it once and it'll stay on. There you go.
How are you, Richard? It's good to see you. I'm Dustin Sam, the executive pastor at the Grove Church. Let's pray. Father, thank you for this wonderful town, the community, the opportunity to be together and to do your will. We just thank you for these men and women that are of our leadership and the direction of the community. May the Lord bless us, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir. Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you read the rules for speaking to council?
Yes, sir.
Sir, before we do that, I'd like to make a request of council that Vice Mayor Behringer is at a training session out of state right now, and he would like to join the meeting via phone, but we'll have to get council's approval to do that. And city attorney may have some additional information to provide council before you make a vote.
That's correct. It rarely happens, but there are times during extraordinary circumstances when a council member cannot make a meeting. And it is permissible for them to appear by phone, provided we do have a physical quorum present here in the chambers, which we do. So, in this case, Member Behringer, I believe, is out of state and is requesting to appear by phone. And according to the general's office, whether this constitutes such circumstances is the determination of this group. So if he feels appropriate, Mr. Behringer will be appearing by phone tonight.
Okay. Could I have a motion to that effect, to allow Member Vice Mayor Behringer to speak over the phone?
I would make that motion, and I believe what I'd have to say is that we find that there are extraordinary circumstances that permit, that are allowing him to be here tonight, correct?
That's fine. You find it appropriate for him to participate by phone.
And we find it appropriate for him to participate by phone.
Do I have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Matt, are you there?
I am, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Clerk, would you read the rules for speaking to council?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearing must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Sign-up and oath cards are located on the table in the back of the council chamber. Citizens shall not comment on any issues more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issues, and citizens are given three minutes to speak on all items.
Thank you, Clerk. Next item is we have the approval for two sets of minutes of the regular city council meeting on May 9, 2017, and the special city council meeting on June 6 of 2017. And I have a motion to approve that? Or are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? See none? Accept.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion? Could I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Special recognition and presentations. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. I have some letters of appreciation. I'd like to read the employees' names for the record. From Community Development is Karen Dorman, Development Specialist; Eddie Galundo, Natural Resources Planner, from our Fire Department; Danny Ellis is a driver-operator paramedic; David Neld, who's an acting lieutenant; and Jeffrey Trafton, who's a firefighter EMT.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next is Parks and Rec has presentation. I think that's semi-annual presentation.
Yes, sir. We have, from Brevard County, the new director, Mary Ellen Donner, who'll brief council on north area park and recreation and current activities, and the proposed FY18 operating budget.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager. My name is Mary Ellen Donner. I am the new Parks and Recreation Director for the County of Brevard. I have with me this evening Jeff Davis, the North Area Parks and Rec Operations Manager. In your backup agenda, I believe you received a copy of Jeff's most recent semi-annual report. In addition, we were asked to give a brief presentation to you this evening. So without further ado, our mission statement.
There'll be a clicker there.
Oh, I have control. Our mission statement, as you can see, is to provide recreation and leisure activities reflecting the interests and values of citizens and visitors, thereby enhancing the quality of life for Brevard citizens, Brevard County. The next slide actually depicts what we consider in the Parks and Recreation as the north area. We actually have three geographical areas, north, central, and south, as well as an endangered, environmentally endangered lands program. So I just wanted to refresh anyone's memory, who might be watching, where our boundaries for north district are. There are a number of revenue sources that we call upon and use for the north area. General Fund, Balance Forward, of course, the MSTU for District One, Cape Canaveral, and Port St. John MSTU, Grants, North Brevard Special Rec District, Program Fees, Rentals, Donations, and then miscellaneous. Just wanted to give you a picture of what we have gone through in the last seven or so years. So our height for our general fund revenue in 2007, you see, was a little over $6 million for the north area. And as to date, we have lost about 44% of that. So it's been a very challenging seven years or so, but we just wanted to give you an idea of where we are today. Also, along with that revenue drop, we had a staff drop. Again, starting in 2007, we had 131 full-time staff dedicated to the north area, Parks and Recreation area, and right now we have 87.75, so 88 full-time staff. So that's a pretty dramatic decrease with an increase in area or the same area. And so we wanted to give you an overlay of what the north area operations, operating revenues are and our operating expenses. So the operating budget for the entire department is about $34 million. The north area itself is $8,750,000. So it's approximately one-third of the operating budget, one-quarter, excuse me, one-quarter of the operating budget. And that annual operating budget, excuse me, was $36 million. So I stand corrected. We wanted to let you know that in the north area operations, we operate 43 parks. The system overall has 121. And within those, you can see the breakdown of some of the parks, our regional parks, our community centers, your community centers, senior centers. And of course, there are three neighborhood strategy areas within the north area, but there is one strategy area within the city of Titusville, and that's Isaac Campbell. And this is just a breakdown of county-owned parks within the city of Titusville and city-owned parks operated by the county in the city of Titusville. In the backup agenda of Jeff's semi-annual report, you have a full listing of programs, but these are just some of the programs that are offered within the north district. The north area has unfunded needs. The entire Parks and Recreation Department has over $23 million of unfunded needs throughout the county, but the north area, as you see, is about $6 million. The next slide I wanted to talk to you about is the environmentally endangered lands. The county, in its entirety, manages about 16,500 acres of land, 5,132 acres which are in the north district, north area of Brevard County. There is one education center, and that would be eels, and that's Enchanted Forest. This is a depiction of the funding for the environmentally endangered lands. As people are very passionate about the lagoon, there are an equally passionate group about the environmentally endangered lands. And there was a referendum that was in 1991 that sunsetted in 2011, and that's that big red drop that you see from 2011 to 2012. That was a bond referendum that sunset. So what's going to happen is, at the end of next budget year, the lines come together. But what happens after that is depicted by this slide. Those referendum dollars are decreasing, and at 2024, all of the referendum money goes away, and there's no land, no money to preserve or protect or maintain those eel lands. And what those eel lands encompass, they have, like I mentioned, an education center. They have multiple sanctuaries that you can actually have passive recreation. You can ride your horse. You can go for a bike ride. You can walk. And then on the managed lands, they do prescribed fire burns. They actually cut fire lines between tracts of land or between houses. And of course, they remove invasive plant species and just manage the lands county-state and so forth. So we're very concerned, obviously, that in 2024, the funding for the eel project goes away. So that was just a brief overview of the Brevard County Parks and Recreation, and Jeff and I are available for questions.
Are there any questions? Let me just get this done. Member Diesel?
Well, I personally know you do a good job because I worked over 20 years for Parks and Rec doing the summer rec program at Jackson, and I can tell you there's a tremendous need out there for such activities, and I know you do a good job there. Which brings me to the next point, because the thing that I'm hearing more and more from people, and Jeff, I think you were at the gathering we had, and I heard over and over, activities. I'm not saying it was directed at Parks and Rec by any means. I'm simply saying that activities. So I guess I would ask, is there a way, first of all, do you know the numbers? And I know you do, so I'm going to be redundant and ask it, but you know the numbers of all the things that you put out there and give an idea of what's working and what's not working? For example, and I know when we did summer rec, we knew exactly how many people were there every day. I see in the unfunded list here nearly $6 million. Most, all of that, if not all of that, at my scan, is facility. So then I would go to the next step and say, how many people are involved and who most uses these facilities? Is it a high number? Is it a low number? Do we need to prioritize? One thing that stuck out in my mind, and I'm not opposed to tennis by any means, but nearly $500,000 to renovate or fix Singleton Tennis Courts. And that's one that stood out to me. So I guess what I'm saying is, is there a way to say, this is working, and we certainly are dealing with a whole lot of people and activities here, and this really isn't working. We don't have a whole lot of people coming here. And this is not an accusation. This is a, can we step back and I sit on the board, and I'm going to be there with you when we can discuss this further, I'm sure. But when I looked at the whole program and the whole presentation, my thought was, where are the participation numbers, and can we get facilities remedied there, and can we increase facility? For example, if we've got square dancing going on and three people are showing up at night, well, somebody's missing a partner. And so what I'm getting at is, that would be something you then say, well, let's try something else. You guys may have some commentary on that.
Can I address the board councilman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. First of all, we do have a metrics system of measuring the, I dropped that mic somewhere, measuring the proficiency or the productivity of certain programs. It's a study evaluation. After every program is completed, our assignment for the coordinator or the superintendent is to actually go back, evaluate the dollar amount spent for that actual program versus the attendance of the program, and we just actually sit down and discuss whether or not that's something that we want to continue to do or something that we want to scrap. That's done on every program. So there are some things that we tried, threw at the wall, that didn't stick, and if it does stick, and it adheres, and the people in the community want it, we continue with those programs. We're always exploring new possibilities, new programs. We do track by attendance report. I can provide this board with the numbers. We provide a attendance report on all of our community centers, all the activities that we do. I could provide that information through via email, too, that actually gives you an account for every community center, every event that we've ever done in the past year, basically the past three years, I could provide that report to you. So we are measuring. Those are important to us, that we know what are, we want to maintain our relevance to the community, so by the number of people that we're serving, we're meeting that need.
And that's really what I wanted to hear and give you the opportunity to say, was the fact that we're finding out where the participation is, and we are putting our dollars in that area, and if it's not there, we're doing something else, you know, maybe a little outside the box, maybe something new. Works for me.
Well, continued sponsorship and joint partnership with other organizations, whether they be government organizations or just civic or church organizations, we are soliciting and deeply involved in doing group events with a lot of different other groups. The Grove Church has actually participated and helped us over at Campbell, so we're constantly doing outreach. My coordinator's been getting an assignment to actually go out, create partnerships with different civic and church organizations.
You used the word partnership, and I wanted to add, this went down my notes. I know there's some really good programs in the community. One of those would be the Fighting Edge with Willie Taylor, and I was just there yesterday, and I try to get there once a week, and he's making a big difference with those kids, and he's making a big difference with community service from them. I'm not saying that, go do that. I'm simply saying, we evaluate those programs, and there's a process by which they can come to you and say, hey, we're affecting this many kids' lives. Can you help us? Is there such a thing?
Absolutely. I met with Mr. Taylor today, as a matter of fact, probably around 3 o'clock. He came to my office. Very, very passionate person about what he's doing. He actually was almost in tears talking about how, what he's doing and impacting young people's lives. Willie is a product of Titusville. He grew up in Titusville. I know his family, so he had a person who was a part of his program that person's life was taken. So it was a really, really emotional tug on him that he's not doing enough. The comment that we shared with each other is that when good people, meaning us, the good people of the city of Titusville do nothing, then the product is a bad behavior that we're seeing in certain situations. So we have to become more proactive and start, definitely stay involved and continue doing things to help our community.
Well, as I said to you before at a recreational meeting, I do believe, I feel, and this is my feeling, I feel this is a council that wants to focus on youth activities. It's one of our goals. And with that said, we certainly are going to lean on you maybe more than in the past. And I can tell you, and this is not the place for this right now, but you know, that Gibson gym over there's always been one of those diamonds in the rough, and you know, I know you guys are working hard to make that a shiny diamond, and we'll continue to communicate on that, but I appreciate your port.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to add to that. I've had some interaction with Mr. Taylor. He's an amazing person. Everything he's doing, he's doing on his own, with help from some volunteers, but he's put something together that's really affecting the youth and possibly keeping him on the straight and narrow rather than taking a turn in the road. So I think anything we can do for him, we probably would want to do that, so.
Absolutely.
Who's next? Member Stokoe?
It might have been...
I'm sorry. Did you get kicked off or something?
You can go first if you want. Oh. Yes, go ahead. You're welcome.
Jeff, we know you're doing a wonderful job.
I try.
And you know the Gibson Center is looking better and better.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we add one more item to your plate?
Absolutely.
When my kids were home, they used to go over to Lou Gardens and Winter Park for movie night in the park. Can we do a movie night in the park, in Sandpoint Park? So the families can bring their picnics, can come down and watch a movie.
Now, I like bragging because I'm from Titusville. I grew up here in Titusville. This is home for me, and I recall the big movie theater off of 405 when I was growing up as a kid, and my mom taking me there. We have a 27-inch, a 27-foot outdoor theater system that we possibly could do that. Doing it on a scale of 12 in a year is kind of a huge undertaking. I would eventually say probably between 4 and 6, we possibly could make that happen. We just recently appointed Sammy Fairclough as our special events coordinator. He has a lot of experience in working with movies in a park, so I can assure you that you will see more than it has been in the past, but to say that we can do one every month is a bit of a stretch. I can almost guarantee you that we can do it between 4 and 6. Between 4 and 6.
We won't hold you to one a month.
Okay.
But it would be fun to...
We'll try.
To have the families be able to go down to Sandpoint Park, bring their picnic baskets. You don't have to hang on to the kids and make them sit in those seats. You can sort of let them run around.
And I'm saying 4 to 6, considering the weather, because we know we get all this rain, and then it's the colder times of the year, it won't be a good time to actually do those, but we certainly can, will entertain that, and I'll take that back in staff.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thanks.
I'm just going to make a quick comment on that. I have brought my two granddaughters to some of those shows that you put on the movies, and it's great. It's great fun, so we appreciate it if you can do something on that. Member Stokoe?
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for your presentation. You know, I really appreciate everything you guys do, and I think, as a lot of us have spoken on the council, one of our actual goals from our citizen-community conversation was juveniles. So this is something that's really near and dear to my heart. I had a couple of questions. I don't know if you guys have the answers now or if you want to come back. On the slide four, the north area revenue sources, do you guys have a breakdown of how much is coming out of each of those items?
I do.
Okay, perfect. Specifically, I'd like to know the recreation for District One MSTU.
So the total district actually generates, from 2017 budgeted, $2,604,585. $900,095,2 is actually collected from the city of Titusville.
Okay, so $900,000. Okay. And then on slide seven, where you guys talk about your operating revenue and operating expenditures, when you have the 3.5 roughly million for operating expenses, do you guys have a breakdown of how that is actually allocated out?
We do.
Okay. Is it possible for us to see that or...
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And my goal behind that, in all honesty, is to actually kind of get in there and see what is going, talking about the evaluation methods and new potential ideas, and I know Jeff spoke on this, partnerships. I think that is one of the best things that we can do, and just brainstorming. I work at Eastern Florida State College, so I work with Mike, and we talk a lot. We used to actually, back when I had a different role at the college, in marketing and community relations, we actually started at Isaac Campbell Park. We had a college connections club where we reached out to kids, and we tried to bridge that gap and just expose them to the college lingo and get them familiar with it, and I'd love to see that with the churches. We have a lot of good resources in our community, and I just want to kind of look through that and see, okay, can we expand here? Do we see that this maybe isn't working, and then kind of tap into that? So that's kind of my thought process on that.
So with that 3.5, 3.6 million, that's for the entire north area of Parks and Recreation. So I don't believe we have it broken down to the, dividing it any further than operating expenses for the various parks within the city of Titusville, but I can certainly give you a...
Like how much is spent on certain events?
It won't go to that detail.
Okay.
I doubt. I don't think so. But I can certainly get with the finance manager in my department and see what we can provide.
Okay. Maybe just start exploring it if we don't have it, just to try to get in there a little bit.
So you're looking for the operating breakdown for the...
Yes. So when it goes into, where you guys were talking about the different events that you're having, the summer camps, the spring camps, the cheerleading, you know, how much is going into that from that operating budget?
I will, I will try.
Okay. Okay. And then I guess that goes into my, I'm sorry, that goes into my next question. So these programs that are offered, is it possible with those to get kind of more information on them, like are, how many, what is the... relations, we actually started at Isaac Campbell Park, we had a college connections club, where we reached out to kids, and we tried to bridge that gap, and just expose them to the college lingo and get them familiar with it. And I'd love to see that with the churches. We have a lot of good resources in our community, and I just want to kind of look through that and see, okay, can we expand here? Do we see that this maybe isn't working, and then kind of tap into that? So, that's kind of my thought process on that.
So, with that 3.5, 3.6 million, that's for the entire north area of parks and recreation. So, I don't believe we have it broken down to the dividing it any further than operating expenses for the various parks within the city of Titusville. But I can certainly give you a...
Like how much is spent on certain events?
It won't go to that detail, I doubt. I don't think so. But I can certainly get with the finance manager in my department, and see what we can provide.
Okay. Maybe just start exploring it, if we don't have it, just to try to get in there a little bit.
So, you're looking for the operating breakdown for the...
So, when it goes into where you guys were talking about the different events that you're having, the summer camps, the spring camps, the cheerleading, you know, how much is going into that, from that operating budget?
I will try.
Okay. And then I guess that goes into my, I'm sorry, that goes into my next question. So, these programs that are offered, is it possible with those to get kind of more information on them? Like, are, how many, what is the cost, if you're going to go to a week-long cheerleading camp? Like, what are we doing? And then what are we doing to promote those currently, right now?
So, it's my understanding that the department at this point does not do a cost recovery analysis, which I believe is what you're referencing. I know that going forward, it's something that we're looking at when we get to a program lifecycle, that we're evaluating the cost and the recovery, and the service, whether it's a basic service, a break-even service, or a service that's an individual service that might be paid for. So, we're not quite there yet. It might take a while to get there, but that's my goal, to get us there, so that if, to Councilman Diesel's comment, that if we have a program that when we do the evaluation, that we can take into account, because typically, unless it's a stayed and true program, if it's something that's tried, you know, there is an end to it. It's the end of the program lifecycle. So, hopefully, we'll get to that point, so that we can objectively evaluate not just the programs that are asked for, but the programs that are offered.
Okay. Yep. No, I'm excited. This gets me excited. But yeah, I just kind of want to dig in there, maybe get a little too involved, but yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additionally, and I'm not going to put you on the spot particulars at this point, but I understand there's some other information that is prescribed by the interlocal agreement that isn't on the report, and if you could get with the city manager, or do you want to comment on that, or I'll just have them get with you?
Sure, that'd be fine.
Okay. As to what they are, I don't even know, maybe the same ones that Member Stokoe was talking about, but if you would just get with him and go over that, okay?
Absolutely.
And I appreciate you being here. Any other questions?
Chair, I have...
Vice Mayor, did you wish to speak?
Ah, yes, sir.
Are there any other questions for...
No.
Okay. We thank you very much for your presentation. We have to accept it, yeah.
He wanted to talk, I thought.
Oh, cool. Oh, Matt, you do?
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. And just a few questions for the director. So, one, in the slide presentation, is the Eels program that $2 million a year...
Matt, you're very hard to understand. Can you speak any louder or closer to the microphone?
Sure. Maybe that'd be a little better. So, the $2 million a year that's listed under the Eels program, is that a portion, or is that inclusive of what's stated for the north area operation, the 9 or 2.7 million? Or is that an additional $2 million?
So, what you're looking at on the environmentally endangered land is the Parks and Recreation Department budget for the entire program, and it's not broken down by the north area.
Okay. So, that is not inclusive of the north area operation, the 8.7 million?
It's inclusive of the north area. It's the entire Parks and Recreation budget for Eels, if I understand your question correctly.
Correct. Do you know how, what percentage of that $2 million is part of the north area operation?
I do not. The only, I could get that for you, but the only information is that of the 16,500 lands that, acres that the Parks and Recreation Eels program manages, 5,132 acres is in the north area.
So, here's, I guess, a couple of things that I'm curious as to. So, one is that whereas, there are three portions to the parks, geographical boundaries, Parks and Rec geographical boundaries, is there a whole amount in the north area, do the county commissions just want it approved, or is it all bound to District 1?
Did anybody, I'm sorry, I didn't understand quite the question.
Matt, can you repeat that, please?
Sure. So, there, my understanding is that there are three areas of operation that are geographically separated from Parks and Rec.
Correct.
North, towards the central and the south.
Correct.
Does, for District Park and Rec, does that go beyond the county commission of District 1 boundaries, meaning is it also inclusive of District 2's boundaries?
Please, did you...
Are you familiar with the districts?
I know our districts run from Scotts Moore to 528.
That's District 1.
That's District 1. If that's the question that he's asking, because it's really, really hard for me to...
I believe that's the question he's asking, is the north area inclusive of any areas beyond District 1?
No, sir.
Okay. So, and then the second question would be, I would be very interested to see, although Titusville is a portion of the north area, we don't constitute the entirety of the north area.
Correct.
So, and where my belief is that it is, as a municipality, we are a portion of the county, but we are a city and a municipality of our own. Therefore, the data that I would be very interested in is that the costs, expenses, unfunded necessities that pass specifically to the city of Titusville. Because what my, what I heard earlier was that we are, from the city of Titusville, contributing $900,000 a year, or just short of a million, into Parks and Rec. So, what I would be curious to is, of $1 million, if we only measure within the boundary of the city limit, how much are the, what do the expenditures cost per year?
So, if I understood correctly, I think I can answer for the city of Titusville, both city-owned parks operated by the county, and county-owned parks operated in the city. So, the FY16 actuals of the county-owned parks in the city, the expenses, I'll just round it off, was about $1.4 million. The revenue was $120,000. So, the difference was about $1.2 million, $1.258 million on the county-owned parks run in the city. Now, the city-owned parks run by the county, the expense is about $875,000. The revenue is about $95,000. So, the delta is, give or take, $775,000. So, if you add those two differences together, that gives you how much it costs just for the city of Titusville parks, both city-owned and county-owned, $1.2800. So, you're looking at about $2 million.
Okay. And total revenue collected was?
Revenues collected.
The revenues collected were calculated into that delta. So, that $2 million is with the expenses minus the revenues, and then there's what's left over.
But I think he went so what the revenues were.
What the revenues were, again?
Were $900,000?
No, the, oh, you mean from the tax, yes, yes. From Titus, the city of Titusville, MSTU alone, was $900,952.
Okay. And is the, intended the, there's a band five, I think, and I believe I would say that the total of Parks and Rec...
Matt, you're going to have to repeat that. It was very garbled.
So, my understanding, or as the president of the presentation, are that the unfunded needs for the north area are just shy of $6 million.
Correct.
And Park and Rec's total was, I think you said 23?
A little over 23 million, yes, sir.
Okay. What is the plan, or I guess two-fold, what is the strategic plan in meeting those needs based on, for the north, specifically in the city of Titusville, in contrast to the division of percentages throughout the county? Meaning, everybody has needs. It seems like if we have only $6,023 rest in the suburb of South, how, what proportion should we be prepared to accept as an accomplishment, or meeting the needs of our community compared to the needs of other communities?
I think, and I might defer to the city manager, it might be a conversation that we need to have. I mean, the north area all total is about one-third of that $23, $24 million. How specifically it relates to Titusville, the unfunded needs were prioritized, and so if there were other items that the city felt that it needed, or wanted, or its citizens needed or wanted, that would have to be an ongoing conversation.
So, I would, and I would just, I would consider that critical for the process. And whereas I have full faith in Mr. Davis, because he is there every day, and I think that he is a great steward of resources, I think as, at least the council and policy, it would be worthwhile to discuss what the priorities of the citizens, an opportunity for us to communicate that, at least in a cycle that would potentially result in the resources and the values of our citizens being met in a deliverable manner. Because at this point, we communicate like we are tonight, you know, we hope for this program or that program. But beyond, but beyond that, I would, I hope to see that it would be a longer, ongoing conversation, because some of those needs may not fit the comprehensive plan that we have anymore. And so, if we, if carrying a theoretical, that doesn't need to be there, so we actually may be able to wash some of those things off, whereas maybe we'll have some others on that may be more reflective of what our citizens would desire.
Matt, that's a lot of information to be getting in and hearing, not all of it. If I can make a suggestion, I think they got the idea of what you're looking at, but maybe when you're back in town, you could set up a meeting and go over it. That's perfectly legitimate. You alone will do that with them.
Okay.
Is that correct? Would you like to do that?
Absolutely. We'd be more than happy to meet with anyone. I do know that we did have a preliminary meeting, just reaching out, meeting and greeting last week, and we have a follow-up meeting with some of the community partners at us and the city of Titusville this Thursday, to discuss program ideas and directions that we may want to take a look at.
Great. And, but I, looking at your faces, I understand you got part of what he said, but probably not all of it.
I really couldn't hear him very well.
It isn't very good. This is the first time we've actually done it, that I know of, in 11 years, that I'm in here. It's a new one. So, if you will do that, and also check with the city manager on the information that is evidently part of the interlocal agreement, and we'll get it all together, okay?
Perhaps.
Sure.
Having been at these meetings, and sitting on the board for the Parks and Rec, I can tell you, we've discussed this, and I can tell you that I've thrown up there to Mr. Davis, that our citizens are looking for activities, and I think I said that again tonight. And I also talked about when you have the unfunded facility needs that you see, I think that we need to prioritize what those needs are, what they need to be, as far as facilities, based on the participation in those facilities. So, I think we're all on the same page. I think the key factor there that I heard from Vice Mayor Behringer, and I heard from you, and certainly I've said the same thing, is what do our citizens want? And that's easy for us to say, "Well, I think I heard this, and I heard that," and we did have the Saturday thing, but as far as specific things, when I look at your list of unfunded needs, or the things that you have going, I started off by saying, "How do you measure what works and what doesn't work?" Well, if people are participating, we're doing well. If our citizens in Titusville are enjoying what they're doing, whether it be soccer, or baseball, or gym time, or boxing, or whatever it may be, we're moving forward. I think the numbers of participation is what, the key to everything. If they're not participating, we're wasting our money. If they are participating, it's money well spent. We need to find out what our citizens want. You just told me there, you told us that you're reaching out to find out from our citizens, and however you do that, through some sort of survey or gatherings, and we can certainly do that same thing. But that's what we've got to do. What do our citizens want? And that's where we need to spend the money that's coming from the Titusville area.
Is that sufficient?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else anybody would like to say? I thank you very much. We do need a motion to accept the presentation, understanding that there's still more information to go back and forth. So, somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I don't think you have to repeat it. I think, no, I think we got that one. You got that one? Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes, we get a second? I didn't hear a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any opposed, like sign passes unanimously, and we appreciate your presentation this evening. Thank you. All right. Next one is boards and commissions. Mr. City Manager, you want to introduce this one?
Titusville Housing Authority, there are seven members appointed by the mayor with approval of the city council. The authority has the power to purchase and lease property, construct and re-appel date property, and hire employees. The authority has the responsibility to initiate housing programs that will lead to safe, sanitary, and healthy dwelling units for low-income families. The authority meets on the first Tuesday of the month at 6:30 at 524 South Hopkins Avenue in Titusville, Florida. The terms of member Mary Polk will expire on 31 May 2017. She has expressed a willingness and desire to continue to serve on the authority, and has requested a reappointment to a four-year term, which will expire on 31 May 2021. Currently, there is one other applicant for consideration. It's Ms. Jennifer Taylor, who has also expressed her willingness and desire to serve, and recommended action of council is to appoint one member to Titusville Housing Authority for a term to expire on 31 May 2021. The member is currently appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city council. This was tabled at a regular council meeting on 23 May 17.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, that information was new to me also, that I have the nomination, and then council either approves or disapproves it, but that's part of our procedure, and I have some comments to make. Are these old lights, or are these new lights?
Sorry.
No, that's all right. I just didn't know whether, okay. I did research both applicants, and I, well, I know Jennifer Taylor very well, and she's a wonderful person. Looking at the application and talking to others about Ms. Polk, Ms. Polk has been doing a fine job. She has good participation and good attendance. She has also been endorsed by the executive director, several of the board members, and the county District 1 commissioner, and the entire county commissioner, commission through an endorsement through a resolution. I don't know if everyone saw that, but it was quite definitive. I frankly think that Ms. Taylor has spent about seven years on this board, and has done a fine job, and I think it's not usually our procedure to take someone off the board, and I won't say it never happens, but it's usually somebody who hasn't either kept up their attendance or something like that. But usually, our procedure is to reappoint someone who has been doing a good job. So, my nomination tonight, all that being said, oh, there's one other thing. I think we would also send out a wrong message to all of our volunteers on all of the boards if we were to just take somebody who's been, doing a good job and not keeping them on the board, so I ask you to consider that. My nomination is Mrs. Polk.
Sir, do you have some cards on this item?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'll take that back and hold that after we have the cards. Would you read the cards, please, clerk?
Yes, sir. Mary Polk?
Come out, please, ma'am.
Sorry, not familiar with this. Hi, I'm Mary Polk, and I've served six years on the housing. And I've kind of put something together, so I don't have to stumble. I apologize for not being here for the last meeting, but normally I get a letter or a phone call alerting me about the reappointment, and this time I did not get one. So I believe everyone has a copy of my letter that I sent out. I did watch the meeting, so I'm here tonight to say that I had no intention of not accepting my new term, and we have a resolution from our board unanimously voting Mr. Van Uzen and myself for a continuous term. I've spent six years, Tuesday nights, 6:30, coming to these meetings, participating in all these new policies that come down from HUD, and HUD in itself is a whole new animal. It's another beast, and you learn a whole new language. And just to learn that language filled with acronyms is big, okay? So I did my certifications, I've taken certain courses. Took me about four years to finally get comfortable learning out how to speak HUD. And as an effective board member, and in being effective, you need to know what these acronyms refer to. Also, the public housing invested a lot of money in me to ensure that I continue and further my education to be an effective board member. And everyone else on the board has longevity, and I believe that this board has to have a history with its commissioners. And what I had said was, board members of other organizations can be rotated without functional loss. However, the advantages of experienced and seasoned board members, knowledge of the housing authority activities cannot be undervalued. To demonstrate this point, other members have had longer terms, some over 30 years. And that's my.
Don't go away. Is there any member of council that wishes to ask any questions of Ms. Polk? I see none. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That being, next, next.
Billy Fitzgerald. And then Laura Ward.
You can give them to me, I'll pass them. Oops. See how many you got there?
I think most of you know me, but I'm Billy Fitzgerald, and I'm chairman of the Titusville Housing Authority. And I just wanted to speak to give you an overview of what we do, because I know that I run into a lot of people, and they know I'm in real estate, and they find out I'm on the housing authority board, and they say, oh, how are houses selling now? You know, and I told them, it's not that, it's a different thing. But I would like to, just a quick overview, and you have all this to go with it. Okay, our mission statement. The Board of Commissioners and staff of Housing Authority, City of Titusville, continue to strive to exceed our mission. And our mission is to promote adequate and affordable housing, economic opportunity, and a suitable living environment free from discrimination. The Housing Authority has pursued programs that improve the availability of quality assisted housing while promoting improved community standards, economic development, and the betterment of individuals and families who are served. And for the last several years, we have been scored as a high performer by HUD, and that's a real start of something to achieve. And I'm sure that the reason we receive that is because we have a superior CEO in Mr. Robert Lambert, and we have a, equal to anything, we have a great, great staff that wins us this award every year. So we are, you always said, you took part in my program there. Seven-member Board of Commissioners appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. And we have also, by being appointed by the city, we have to follow city rules, but we have a book this thick of policies and rules and regs from HUD that we have to follow. All our properties are owned by the federal government that we manage, and through the HUD agency, we manage those. And we have 969 units to manage. We have Section 8, which is the vouchers that they give us, and we qualify the people and give them the vouchers, and they go out and find their own rental. But then we handle all the money and paying the landlords and everything. We have 714 of those, and 317 are for family, and they're 100% leased. We have 119 for non-elderly disabled, and they're 95% leased up. And then we have four available, and of these of the elderly, we have four available, and we have 13 on the street. And what we call on the street is, they have the voucher, they've been awarded the voucher, and they're out looking for a landlord that will let them rent under Section 8. And the next one I'm very proud of, it's the Veterans Affairs Supported Housing, VASH. And we're the one authority in all of Brevard that was picked by HUD to manage these. And we have, and they're for homeless veterans. We have 2578, 93% leased up. We have 15 on the street, and three available for homeless veterans. And we have, for the Section 8 program, we have 280 on the waiting list. And we only get about one.
Fitzgerald, your time is up, but if you'd like some extra time, I can ask the council.
Could I have some extra time?
How much would you like, man, two minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes?
Is that enough?
I hope so.
Is that okay?
That's all up to you.
We don't know, I have to talk faster, huh?
Do I have a motion to that effect?
You have a motion.
And a second?
Second, yep.
All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Pass unanimously, ma'am, you're good to go.
Okay, so the next, the fair market rents and the current income limits, those are studied and revised by HUD annually, and we have to go by those. We have 330 landlords under contract, and you can see there that it's a breakdown of race. And we have, our vouchers are, we have a portability, they receive them here, but they can take them anywhere in the United States. And we do have a rule that they have to live the first year in Titusville, City of Titusville. And in our public housing, we have 255 units, 356 applicants now, and waiting, current waiting list, and 150 elderly, 241 family, and 250 meet the federal definition of homeless, which also, the ones we're housing, 71% of those meet that definition. If we weren't housing them, they would be homeless, probably. We have Carpenter Homes, 16 units, Corner Park in Maine, Maxwell Court, Brown, Palmetto and Robbins with 14 units, Collins Avenue with 18 units, and Scattered Palmetto and Pine, and Third and Fourth Avenue, we have 86 units. And Titusville Towers, we have 90 in residence and assisted living facility, which is second to none, it's just great. And we have 30 independent residents. And all in all, you can see the money that's, most of this money that's, we spend is spent in Titusville. And I'd like to invite you to our meeting, which is on first Tuesday of any of the month at 6:30. And anytime you want to come for a tour, or we'll sit down with you and explain everything, take you on a tour. And last of all, if you see where there are any gaps, or any avenues that we need to inspect or check on, bring them to us, and we'll be happy to discuss any changes that we can make for our betterment. But if it's going to cost money, bring money, because we're on a tight budget.
I gotta remember that one.
And our budget's been cut every year for the last few years, and this year we're expecting a 20% cut.
Yeah.
So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Fitzgerald?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
And thank you, ma'am, for bringing that, and I look forward to your ongoing years of service. During your time, how many times is the either representative from the Titusville Housing Authority meeting in collaboration with Titusville to determine common goals and outcomes?
What is he saying?
Yes, ma'am. My question was, I don't know if you know, and I would be happy to, but how many times a year is the Titusville Housing Authority meeting with the City of Titusville in order to determine common goals that we're both trying to achieve for the same outcome?
I think he's asking, how many times do we meet with you, or, is that what you're asking, Matt?
Yeah, how many times do we meet together in order to establish the Housing Authority's mission exists, the City of Titusville likes to see this? How are we working together in order to achieve that outcome?
I don't think we have special meetings together, but we've always worked together.
Again, I would be happy to follow up. Is that, I would be something I was very interested in, because I look at the public housing authority as, and I mean, for each door, to decide so. It has wonderful guidance for a very long time, which is great. And my hope would be that I, the needs of the city continually evolve, that the City of Titusville would be a part of that discussion and planning as well, not solely from the City of Titusville, but also in itself.
Matt, you're breaking it up again.
Okay. Well, I would be happy to entertain a long, ongoing meeting to discuss outcomes and goals between the Housing Authority and the City of Titusville.
So a joint meeting is what you're asking for, to discuss?
Correct. One more.
I'm sure that can be arranged.
It can be arranged, sure, yeah.
Mr. Lambert, yes? That's, it looks like it's positive that they can arrange that. Again, when you get back into town, you can have discussion with Mr. Lambert or the city manager as to how to arrange all of that.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald.
Did you, she had a question?
I just wanted to see if I was reading this correctly. You said there, does Titusville have the most vouchers? 270, when I was looking at this chart?
This is for the, these are specified strictly for homeless veterans.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Titusville has the most, is that what you're saying? On number 13 is what I'm looking at.
Through the Housing Authority, we're the only housing authority in Brevard that has these.
Okay.
For the homeless veterans.
Okay, so that's why ours is higher?
There may be other programs that have them, but through the Housing Authority.
Okay, all right, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
I see none. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Laura Ward. And that's our last card.
Thank you.
Laura Ward, River Edge Drive, and I'm also on the Housing Authority Board. I watched the meeting last time, and I want to thank all of you who would not just go ahead and take Ms. Polk off the board before you had a chance to speak to her. I thought that was very nice of you. And as the mayor said, it sends a good message to all your other volunteers, not a bad one. The reason I feel comfortable talking about an appointment is because our board did send you this resolution, saying that the board supported the reappointment of both Michael and Mary, and we appreciate the fact that you're looking at it. It's, some boards, having the long history is important, because you never know what's going to come next. And if the members, at least some of them, have that ability to remember the bad thing that happened 20 years ago, well, this sounds a lot like it. Maybe we don't want to do that. And that's kind of experience that you just develop from being there all the time and learning. And I think it's been covered, the other things I don't need to say. I do want to highlight the fact, though, because at the meeting that I watched, from your previous meeting, the subject of homelessness came up, and Mr. Lambert informs me, according to our records, that 70% of our residents came to the Housing Authority with a background that would qualify, by HUD's definition, as homeless. So we do house a lot of people who were or would be homeless, if they didn't have our services. And thank you very much for considering the reappointment of Mrs. Polk. She does a good job.
I appreciate it. Is there any discussion by council at this point? Questions? Oh, yes, go ahead, please.
I did talk to Mr. Lambert about Ms. Polk, and I did talk to Ms. Polk. What I did want to say is, I understand that Jennifer put her name forward, but Mary has been there for a long period of time. I also spoke to Mary. They have spent many thousand dollars training her for this job, and I would hate to see that go to waste, especially since she seems to like that job, and she seems to want to keep that. And I agree with you that we need to be considerate of our volunteers.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Very good. Number Stokel?
Yeah, and I, just to kind of piggyback on that, I did receive an email too from Ms. Taylor, and I think her intention was to help fill a gap if there was one. I don't think she was like, oh, let me go. It was, and part of her email said, I only want to serve in this area of interest should the opportunity arise. And I don't think that was her intent, I think she just was looking to help. So, and I appreciate Mary coming and speaking so we could meet you, and appreciate all you've done for us, so.
And I believe you're right in what you're saying there, because I got a similar letter. And again, Ms. Taylor, I've known her many, many years, and she's a wonderful person, and maybe if one comes up, she could reapply.
Correct.
Okay, well, my nomination is Mary Polk. I guess I need a second, I'm not sure how this one works again.
Right, your appointment, we could have a motion in a second on your appointment.
Okay, I need a motion to that. Why don't I make the motion on that?
You've presented your appointment for council's approval, so at this point, council will make a motion to approve your appointment.
Okay, make a motion. Someone?
I'll make a motion to, to Mary Polk.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those approving the nomination, say yes?
Yes. Yeah.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for your service, and like all the members for the service. Some of them have been on there quite some time.
She has surgery practice.
I know, that's dedication. You came in after just having surgery, thank you. All right, let's go to the next item. Board of Trustees of the General Employees Pension Plan?
Yes, sir. Mr. Thomas Altiff has submitted his resignation effective 17 May 2017. There are no other applications on file, therefore, staff will advertise this vacancy upon your approval.
Okay, so we just need, we need a motion to accept his resignation with regrets, I assume? Okay. Are you making that motion? Were you making that motion?
I thought they had one.
Yeah, we'll make that motion.
Okay, with regrets.
And I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign? Passes unanimously. Municipal Code Enforcement Board, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Currently, there are two vacancies for an alternate member with unexpired terms to expire on 31 October 2017. There's currently one application on file for consideration, Ms. Sandra Ozon, who has expressed her willingness and desire to serve on this board. Her application is part of your packet.
Okay, we need a motion to accept Mrs. Sandra. Okay, we need a motion to accept Mrs. Sandra Ozen as being the only applicant on this one.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, good. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes. Are you up there?
Yes.
I guess it was a yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say yes, passes unanimously. Environmental Commission Semiannual Report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mark Conklin is here to present the Titusville Environmental Commission Semiannual, Semiannual Report, sorry.
Mayor Johnson, council members, staff, thank you for the opportunity to present our Semiannual Report, my name is Mark Conklin, I'm the Vice Chair of our Titusville Environmental Commission, I'm here in the stead of our Chair, Dr. Yant, who could unfortunately not be here tonight, so I'll do my best to be brief and, and be done as quickly as possible, in respecting how much time you, you all serve. This last quarter, the Titusville Environmental Commission participated in our annual Earth Day celebration at Enchanted Forest, we gave out trees, they were donated by our Titusville Men's Gardening Club, we're talking about partnerships with community organizations, and this is one of the long-term, solid community partnerships that we have, and we're, we're certainly delighted that they continue to give us trees, they used some Titusville City property at the water plant off of Knox McCray between Jackson and Cocina Elementary, Jackson Middle School and Cocina Elementary, and I've participated with that group, and what a wonderful group to have in your community, to propagate native Florida vegetation, and then turn around and donate it for our pursuit of denser tree canopies, which is beneficial to our city as a whole, as an attractor to businesses and visitors, and the enhancement of our ecodestination and our ecotourism base. Our Arbor Day celebration, the commission planted a tree at the Pritchard House in celebration of its 150th anniversary, and we're delighted to do so, we're excited about what the city's doing in the Julia Street parking lot, and its embracing of the Pritchard House as a anchor for our downtown destination, so once again, what we're doing in the beautification processes in our downtown, and as an attractor to the hiking and biking community, once again, there's a stellar future for us, and the seed is taking root for our efforts to embrace and expand on ecotourism in, in the city of Titusville. Something that the board has been doing lately is having a discussion on identifying endangered species during development, we've been trying to come up with a recommendation to council on how to identify properties where endangered species may reside, box shell tortoises are, are the, the focal point on how to identify properties that may need assessments, and how we would go as a municipality in assessing properties, but to also be respectful of encroachment on property owners' rights, so we are tiptoeing through this one, and hopefully we'll come up with something great, and a recommendation to council on how to identify properties that, that may or may not have endangered species on them, and how to get our property owners to embrace our need for that to occur. The recommendations from the Environmental Commission on a Florida native plant policy has been going onward, and we've got to, I, I got to take a second here to say thank you to Ms. Arjean and Mr. Galindo for their diligent efforts to provide us with the best of information, staff has been incredible on all points, and just a thank you from the commission, or at least on my behalf, to our, our city being blessed to have such dedicated individuals in the planning department. The information as presented to us was so easily digestible about what's going on with our city's encouragement for developers to embrace Florida native foliage and Florida friendly plantings in their development schemes, and, and what we have to do to come back to council and say, this, this is a good direction, we, we really don't need a lot of hemming in, or blinders, or, or guideposts in this, the city's already moving in this direction, and I can tell you that it dovetails nicely with what's going on with Keeper of Art Beautiful, and they're embracing Florida native plantings and recognizing homeowners and businesses that engage in this process, we, we've got our, our estuary program and our watershed to always be vigilant about, and this is one of the platforms on which we can do it, so, you know, we, we look forward to coming back and refining, you know, taking the draw off of, of what we present on a regular basis, and, and ongoing on how we can enhance and improve a Florida friendly planting and Florida native foliage policy for city council. We also looked at the proposal for the Y Green Pace financing recommendation as a platform for homeowners, individuals, and businesses to embrace green energy strategies with their developments in businesses and homes, and we did recommend that the city take, move forward with what it would mean to endorse the Y Green Program, which, and it's, there's so much there to try to explain what it means, but it is a financing strategy for homeowners to access and acquire green energy equipment and, and systems, and also for, for businesses as well, so if you don't know about it, there's information available through the planning department on the Y Green Program. We did finally dedicate Tony's bench seat, and there's been some discussion tonight about board members who serve incredible distances of time and are dedicated to their community, and, and Mr. Cormelus was one of those, he planted more trees than the rest of us together, and he did it sustained for decades, and he was approaching his 30 years of service to the city as a, as a commission member before his untimely passing, even though he was of advanced age, he outworked all of us, we would show up, four or five of us to plant four or five trees, and go around the corner, and he had 15 planted in half the time, I don't know how he did it, he was dedicated to Titusville Men's Garden Club, and was a community anchor, and it was an honor to celebrate his life and, and contribution to our community at Sandpoint Park with a dedicated bench, so those who haven't seen it, you can go over, there should be a plaque on it, and, and, and there, it's, it should be close to the trees that he planted in Sandpoint Park, to see the, the lasting legacy, when you walk into City Hall downstairs, you can see that the sign rings true, you know, what you, what you do for your community lasts forever, and I hope to serve half as well as he has, and I will be happy with myself for doing so. And we, finally, we, we were in support of pursuing home rule for developing a plastic bag regulation, I don't know how many here are familiar with what occurred in 2010, but we became suddenly aware of just how many sea turtles, they gestate in the Indian River Basin, they, they're juvenile males primarily, migrate back into our watershed, and they grow there, you know, they, they become adults, they, they spend their juvenile years there, and in 2010, we had a cold wa, sustained cold snap, where the water temperature dropped low enough that it stunned all the sea turtles, and that, we suddenly said, wait, wait a minute, there's more sea turtles here in our Indian River than we would have ever assumed. With that knowledge, you, you have to embrace the idea or concept that they are digest, or ingesting plastic bags, they look like jellyfish, and their digestive systems become impacted with plastics, so we have to be acutely aware of, of what's going into the Indian River as far as plastic bags are concerned, because of our proximity to the water line, and our impact on the wildlife there, so these, these sea turtles are out there, they're eating the plastic bags, and we've got to do everything we can to limit the amount of plastic that's windborne and water runoff into our watershed, so if we could, I would encourage our, our council members, our, our staff, our, our legal staff, to do everything in our power to come up with a home rule approach to addressing the use and, and discarding of plastic bags in our community. So, that is a summation of our semiannual efforts, we've got a lot of nice stuff coming in the pipeline, I'm excited about the future for our commission and our city, and does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from council? Remember Stokel?
Couple things, one, if you can tell Dr. Yant I said hello, he was a great biology professor, and two, in regards to the plastic bags, I actually just found out from another citizen that if we recycle plastic bags and styrofoam, it goes to the county, and they actually throw both of those out, so I don't know if that's something that maybe we can talk about with the commission, and seeing how we can maybe work with our county, and seeing if we can do something with that, I was not aware that both of those are being thrown out when you put them in your recycling bin, so, yeah.
Just to give an overview, we embraced single stream recycling, so that everything went into the can, we're hoping that we can still move forward with the three quarters full program to reduce the amount of curbside effort on, on behalf of our city refuse equipment and staff, as a money saver, but what's occurred in that timeframe, since we, we saw recycled goods, single stream recycling, and private industry was making money doing it, the price point for the recovery of recycled goods has dropped so dramatically that it's not economically viable to recycle some recoverable resource streams.
Okay.
So, I can't change the marketplace, what I could say is that if there was a place to sequester our plastics until the market recovered, the economy or policy changed to subsidize recovered plastics, to offset its impact on the environment, and perhaps some carbon banking, these are advanced political issues that our community doesn't have an answer for presently.
Right.
But we could do something about the plastics because of its environmental impact.
Okay.
So if, if, if waste management and the Brevard County landfill are just discarding the plastics, then perhaps maybe we can find a better answer for our locality, not only are we going to engage with the, the National Estuaries Program to address environmental impact and nutrient loading and, and other pollutants that are going into the Indian River watershed, we should also be taking individual efforts to enhance and augment and accentuate the impact that we can have as a community on cleaning the Indian River, you know, we don't have to just do what they're doing, we can do more.
Right.
And we should, and if everybody took this mindset, that we can do more than just what's being recommended, because I am a firm believer that all agencies are directed by revenue limitations, and they go for the low-hanging fruit, and we can combine some community effort where money is not involved, or simple actions can change outcomes, we can do this without money, we can change what's happening, and have a much more dynamic impact.
No, I agree.
Thank you.
I agree, thank you.
You're up.
Okay, I'm probably going to get shot for this, but, City Manager, what had, what I recall is that in Seattle, they use no plastic bags. So what would happen if we outlawed plastic bags? Richard?
That's what they're referencing earlier with the legislation, to allow the home rule to go there, so what we can do is look at taking that up as one of your priorities, if that's where you'd like to go, we certainly can have that discussion brought back to you.
It would be at least an interesting discussion, and something that maybe at some point we need to add that way. Grocery stores would probably shoot me, but, you know.
I just want to let you in.
Well, let me in.
Can I address some of that?
Yeah.
In our perusal of some of the information available to us in, in considering this recommendation, it was apparent that the state legislature has some legal lease, if you will, there's some writings on this, that make it difficult to utilize home rule to regulate plastic bags in the community, there's some industry, stressors, lobbying, if you would, that makes it difficult to encroach on businesses and their ability to conduct business, and their need to use plastic bags as a conveyance for the consumers, so they, they're just saying, wow, it's just too hard for us to do, and I don't think it's too hard for us to do, but this goes all the way to a state level.
I mean, I remember going out to Seattle last year to see my daughter, and I don't recall seeing a plastic bag.
This isn't Washington.
I know, I know this isn't Washington.
It could be more like it, you know?
We could be a little bit more like it.
It starts at home, I, I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But, yeah, there were no plastic bags, so I don't think I ever saw one, and I was there for five, six days.
But plastic doesn't have to be the scourge, you know, there's, there's some scientific approaches where we do har, carbon harvesting, where we come up with more, more viable generation of, of hydrocarbons by capture, it's, it's, it's advanced chemistry, but it's one of the long-range solutions to reducing carbon loading in the atmosphere, as opposed to using petrochemicals, once again, there should, there's industry applications, if we would embrace green energies and environmental industry, that capitulates on our need to take care of the pollution that we're creating.
I would just like us to at least look at it and see what we could do to reduce that, or if we could do that.
Maybe you could look at that and come back with some suggestions.
We've got multiple recommendations, without having a business come in and say, we want to locate in Titusville and start harvesting carbon out of the atmosphere and making plastics that are friendly, or even setting businesses that are closer to home, the 100 Mile Radius Platform that you see on the West Coast could make our recycling approaches more economically viable if we had something closer to home, you know, setting up small-scale operations to take our plastic and recycle it, as opposed to shipping it off to a company that now has determined that plastics aren't economically viable, we can do something with this plastic, and turn a dollar doing it.
Mark, would you be interested in making a presentation to council rather than keep going here, and you've obviously done a lot of research on it, so rather than reinvent the wheel, maybe you can tell us what you have learned?
Surely, the, thinking that the struggle will be for me to encapsulate it into a 15-minute presentation.
How about 20? No, we, we could give you some time on it.
Thank you.
No, we thank you for making the presentation, and the information is very good that you got there, it is something we've been working with for a long time now, I can remember reading when the, the garbage cans were new, that styrofoam and plastic bags were not accepted for, in those things, but people are still putting it in, mainly because they can't read the tops of those things anymore, I think, but it, it hasn't been accepted for some, some time by the single.
There should, we should be able to find a creative use for it.
I don't disagree. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And we need a motion to accept the Titusville Environmental Commission Semiannual Report as presented.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all those in, any other discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, the voice from above gets me every time. It passes unanimously, thank you. Petitions and requests, any member of the public wishing to speak, come forth, and those, well, here's somebody, just come up and sit on the front there, and then as the next person comes up, you'll already be here.
Council CJ Arnold, Titusville, I was here last time asking the city to endorse HR 676, Medicare for All, I work with Speak Out Brevard, Indivisible, and Space Coast Progressive Alliance, we're trying to move in a direction where we've got better alternatives than what we have, the current healthcare bill is in the Senate, and they're closed doors by the majority party, they've shut off the others, saying, we don't need your input, it's a, it's a massive tax cut masquerading as a healthcare bill, quite honestly, the people that aren't participating, 66 million people voted for those folks, but they're shut out, just like the House, CBO says 24 million people are going to lose coverage, cost increases, all kinds of issues related to it, all of our individuals are trying to get our representative posy to engage on this and answer questions like this, what's this about, this is not what we want. Two months ago, we organized a town hall down in Viera, invited Representative- Two months ago, we organized a town hall down Vieira, invited Representative Posey. 500 people showed up, not Representative Posey. He does not want to answer the hard questions about what a terrible bill this is. He doesn't want to answer why he voted to.
Excuse me, sir, but your presentation shouldn't be a political statement about any individual.
I'm talking about something that affects every single resident of Titusville, every single resident.
Why aren't you talking about one person?
Okay, he's the one responsible for changing this.
If you will kind of reformulate and talk about what you want done as opposed to what he's not doing?
Okay, what I want you to do is invite him to meet with his constituents. I'd like the weight of the city council to get behind requesting him merely to show up and talk about these issues. He won't. But now it's time. Individuals like us are getting no answer. We get canned responses back to emails. He's our elected representative. He refuses to meet with his constituents. What would happen to you if you didn't? You're meeting with me right now. You're answering questions. We're in a dialogue. I would like the city council to invite Representative Posey to meet up at the Community College Auditorium, engage in a real town hall. He's not had a town hall since 2009. How about that? He's not accountable. You're accountable to me. You're talking to me right now. He's not accountable. He's hiding. He needs to be called out. We're not getting anywhere, but we like every city and town in Brevard, city council, to invite him to talk to his constituents.
Have you approached any other cities on this?
Every member of our organization is meeting with every city and taking advantage of their five minutes to say, we'd like to engage with our elected representative.
Have you had any success in doing that?
We're just starting this.
Okay.
We're just starting this because this is something that, if this goes through as written, we're going to be in terrible shape, terrible shape. We'd like him to say, HR 676, how come you won't get behind it? Medicare for All, a solution like that. So all we're saying is for each city and town in this and the county, let's invite Representative Posey to talk to us. That's all. That's all we want. Please. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't see any lights on this subject. Next is, who's, you're right there.
Yes, hi. My name's Danielle Hilton, and I actually just had the pleasure last week of doing a presentation in front of Brevard Parks and Recreation at their last meeting. We brought in a company called Leather's Development Company. I'm not sure if you're familiar with them, but they were the development company that helped with the Field of Dreams in Palm Bay. And we just wanted to bring some attention to the fact that we don't have anything in Titusville or really the North Brevard area for children with disabilities park wise. And that is what we did our presentation on. We had a full PowerPoint presentation with them. I know I don't have the time for that. Maybe possibly later on down the road, we can bring that to your guys' attention as well. We kind of just wanted to come tonight, show up, let you guys know that this is something that we are looking into. We would love to see something like this in our town. I have a daughter who's five. She has cerebral palsy. Her daughter, her son, I'm sorry, is 10. He has Asperger's. And to go to the park for us with our children just makes it very difficult. We don't, we can't take them down the slides. My daughter, she doesn't walk. She's in a wheelchair, so therefore she can't really utilize the equipment that we have at the parks here. So we did give Dan Diesel a copy of a brochure that the company brought for us when we did a presentation for them. If you guys want to take a chance to look at it, I also have a couple pamphlets with information on them as well, if you guys want to see that. Like I said, we're not asking for anything as of right now, except for just like we asked them for their support from Brevard Parks and Recreation. We're kind of just asking the same thing from you guys as well. We would like to see this happen. We're not an organization as of yet, but we are establishing as one. We haven't gotten all of our board members on team yet, but we're getting there. When we do, we would like to start the fundraising for this project. We're not asking, like I said, for funding from anybody. We would kind of like to take on that aspect, but maybe later on the road, discuss maybe a site location. I know I'm getting ahead of myself on that one right now. But again, like I said, we did just want to bring attention to the fact that we don't have much in Titusville for that.
Yes, sir.
And thank you guys for being here, and thank you for waiting an hour and a half with kids. Makes it like four hours. So I appreciate you being here. I heard the presentation. We spoke after the presentation. I gave some ideas. By coincidence, this came up at the Parks and Rec Board meeting, the same week that we were opening up Splash Pad. And as I mentioned to them, it reminded me so similarly to how they have an issue, they have a goal, they have something. Quite honestly, I hadn't thought about enough. I hadn't thought enough about the fact that we've got Sandpoint Park, and we've got a Splash Pad, and we've got this, and we've got that, and we've got kids in this community that can't participate. Now, maybe we don't build it, and not we, but maybe we don't get to this, an entire park, but maybe there's going to be some additions to the parks that we have. But what came across my mind, and again, this morning, I was fortunate enough to be at the Rotary Club meeting, and they were showing pictures of the Splash Pad, and the city council lined up, and all the kids playing, and all the wonderful things that went with that. And as I said at the Parks and Rec meeting, and I'm saying now, and I've said to you and I'll say again, that was a community-supported endeavor. And I think that as you guys are addressing this and bringing this forward, this is an introduction. This is the step one off the start line of maybe what it's going to take, you know, the Rotary Clubs, the Kiwanis Clubs, the Lions Clubs, wherever you can learn how to write a grant or something along those lines. I think you have a topic here and a subject here that comes close to many people's hearts. You've got kids that don't have a park. And when we talked about this at the Parks and Rec meeting, I don't want to state this as fact, because I'm not sure the person who said it knew it as fact, but from the Parks and Rec, it was said that there's only one park in this county that has this ability to have, okay, so now maybe two. So one or two parks in this entire 100-mile-long county where special needs children can participate in the park. So I certainly want to endorse your effort. I want you to keep me abreast of what's going on. When there's a place I can step up, if there's a place I can speak to people, I would do that as well. But you have, you have a topic that hit me, and I was a little embarrassed when I stopped and thought about it. I hadn't thought about that. So thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Is the park, one of the parks the Field of Dreams? Is that?
Yes, Park and Field of Dreams. They are individually owned, so they did literally everything on their own to establish that park with fundraising, the community. Like I said, we're using the same development company they did, which is Leather Associates. They contacted them, told them what they wanted to do, and that company, I will say, is amazing. We've only been working on this, I want to say about a short eight weeks, and they've been there every step of the way. They do everything special made. Everything is built by the community. Everybody comes, volunteers for, depends on how many volunteers you have, but it can take anywhere from four days to seven days, maybe a little bit longer, like I said, depending on how many volunteers that you have. But everybody comes in, they build it, they paint it, they do everything. That way, it saves costs on having it actually built, obviously. And then again, we, our plan and our goal is to do most of the fundraising. Now, the parks, their average prices do range depending on the community and how much could be raised. I mean, they've done parks from $1.2 million to parks that cost $150,000. Our goal as of right now is $400,000. Like I said, we haven't done any fundraising. We're not asking for that yet because we're not actually an organization as of yet. We still have to file for the 501(c) and everything like that. But that is our goal as of right now. We did suggest that the Brevard Parks and Recreation meeting, if maybe there would be a way, like I said, later on down the road when this gets a little further on, if maybe there was a site location that we could, I don't want to say be given, it would be nice to own the land, but if not, you know, we're not going to be picky. But I know that also in the Brevard Parks Recreation meeting, it was brought up that you have a park here in Titusville, Stewart Park. I guess they were saying that day, they had brought it up, that there was a lot of issues there and possibly a rebuild was suggested. And that is what that company specializes in. They specialize in bringing a park that's all inclusive. It's not just designed for children with disabilities. It's literally designed for every child. That way, every child could play shoulder to shoulder. Nobody's left out. All families can come and join each other, which makes it even better for everybody because the kids really do need to feel as if they're just as normal as everybody else, in my personal opinion. And I, nobody should be embarrassed of not putting thought into it. My daughter's only five. I would never have thought of this if it wasn't for her. Field of Dreams, I've been there. It's amazing. Like I said, it is privately owned. There is another park. It's on Palm Bay as well. I believe it's called Inspirational Park. They're privately owned as well. And just, it would be, it's a great experience to go there, but the only problem is, is if you're here in North Brevard, that's a 45-minute hour drive. And sometimes with our children, it's not so easy. You could be at the park 10 minutes, and it's time to go. So 45-minute ride to spend 10 minutes at a park is a little unrealistic, in my opinion. So we would just like to see more attention brought to this issue, and if this is something that we could make happen, it would be absolutely wonderful.
Well, I think I probably speak for council, and I think as you get further on down the line and develop some plan and some numbers involved with it, we would welcome you to come back and let us know what's going on.
Great, great. And that's what, that's what we're working for. So we would like to put a presentation together and eventually bring it to you guys, so you would be able to see. And then, of course, the company would also send a rep out to help us assist, so that way if you guys did have any kind of questions concerning it.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. Whoever is next?
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I just want to add a little bit to what she said because in Titusville, we actually have a facility for adults with developmental disabilities, and we also have multiple group homes. And as of right now, there are community outings, but there is nothing for them to go into. Leather's is an associate, builds these parks custom for the community's needs, and they are willing to take on the challenge of making a park that is partly for children, but also has an area where our adults who may have mentally challenged, you know, and physically challenged as well, would be able to come and enjoy this as well because we really, as of right now, I don't think I ever see anyone in town. I see them go sometimes to the playhouse and sometimes to the movies, and that's about it. And this is a real need that we have in Titusville. There are, right now in our group that we have, we have over 230 people that are supporting this. That's in just one Facebook group. There are multiple, multiple families in Brevard that can come to a place like this and enjoy and feel like their children are safe, because that's another thing. The children with, maybe they're not in a wheelchair, but they do have some challenges, they tend to do things like run off. And at a park that, no offense, I love our parks here, but at a park where it's by the water and it's not fenced in, that's a danger to our children because in five to 10 seconds, my son can be all the way across the park and be doing whatever he wants. So I think that I really, really appreciate the support of Mr. Dan Diesel, and I would hope that you all would share this idea with people that you know, because this is something that we really do need. And thank you very much for letting us come up here and speak.
And thank you for coming. Certainly.
Danielle?
Yes.
I hope you have a grant writer, because this would be a really good project to write a grant for.
Yes, and we are in the process. I'm very new to this. I haven't done anything like this before. She hasn't done anything like this before. So really, we've been spending a lot of time on the internet just researching and researching.
Okay.
But we are definitely in the process of taking the steps that we need to take.
Okay. And also, it sounds like you're looking at taking an existing playground and either redoing it or adding to it.
Yes.
Because that would be perfect to add to a playground where you could turn around and have your kids playing next to the other kids.
I agree. And I, and the only reason why I wanted to specifically point that out is because I do have her, like I said, who's in a wheelchair, and then I have a 10-year-old who has no disabilities whatsoever. And it's so hard for them to play at home. Of course, they can play and they get on each other's nerves, of course. But like, when we go out into the community, I feel so bad half the time because she's just kind of sitting in her wheelchair while he's running amok, and it's just not fair because even though she can't verbally communicate, I mean, she's, she knows.
She knows.
She sees. So I do appreciate it.
Go for the grants.
Thank you so much. We're definitely in the process. Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir. I think you're next. Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Johnson, council members. I'm Doug Kaiser with Excel Project Management. We're the developer for the Titus Landing Shopping Center. I have a couple of requests to make tonight. We have, well, first, I wanted to report some news from our marketing folks that went to Las Vegas. They said that this was the first trip that they went to that they got feedback that was positive about Titusville and what's going on here. So all the hard work is starting to pay off. As far as what I want to present tonight, I want to talk about Harley-Davidson, who has just signed a lease for a dealership. And this is the same owner as Space Coast Harley and the Treasure Coast Harley. The owner was set out to create a location which he could do a rental business in conjunction with the cruise industry. We think that's a good opportunity for Titus Landing to enhance its very complimentary use. They can hold events on the town square. They'll draw tourists into the center of Titusville and things like that. So originally, we looked at the zoning code, and we saw that it addresses automobile sales and service, but it didn't specifically address motorcycle sales. So we went to planning and asked for an approval, and an interpretation, we received a letter. As a result, that, as we dug into that, there was a reference to the outdoor display code. So the interpretation was that it would be a mercantile use because they do have merchandise and accessories that they sell. But they viewed the motorcycle sales as an ancillary use, which is what caused the outdoor display requirement to be on that approval. So what we, in the outdoor display approval, we're not allowed to have, it prohibits vehicle display, so that doesn't really work for a dealership. What we'd like to do is, we met with staff and talked to them about what the right approach would be to work this out. And they said that we could initiate a code change like we did when we had the gas pump issue that came up a couple of years ago. So we want to pursue that, and what we'd like to do is request that council initiate and expedite a code change that would allow staff to approve motorcycle and/or vehicle sales as a primary use in urban village, which if it's a primary use, we don't have that outdoor display requirement, is my understanding. So that's the first issue that I'd like to present and have council consider to advance. Should I move on to the second one?
I think we'll probably deal with it all at once.
Okay. The second one is the Titus Landing signage. When our architect put together the signage package, he, or they looked at the, at the signage code and looked at the fact that we had three frontages and formulated a signage package which we're using with our leases. What we've come to find out in implementing that is that it's not a very good fit for the sign code, the way that it's being interpreted. We've run into some things, specific issues on this. So we want to try to correct that. Could I have some more time, please?
Yes, sir. How much would you like?
I need about three minutes.
Okay. Can I have a motion on that? Can I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
So there, the code is really set up for, in multi-tenant, for like automobile traffic going down a street where there's a shopping center that fronts on the street. So our development is more, is unique in that it's more like a mall without a roof. All of this, the majority of these tenants will face inward instead of outward. And because it's a 30-acre parcel- Um, and because it's a thirty-acre parcel, it, um, interpreting it as a street frontage creates some issues for us. We have needs for pedestrian, uh, signage because it is pedestrian-oriented. So, uh, we, we want to have blade signs, which are signs that project out from the face of the building. So as pedestrians walk by, they don't have to look up to try to find out what sign or what store they're in front of. They can just read it at a, by looking up at those, those signs. Um, and multiple sign requirements, uh, come in where, um, in, in different situations. I don't really want to dive into all the details with the time constraints, but, uh, our request and what we talked about with council was trying to come up with a, a comprehensive signage plan, a, a code provision that would allow staff to review and approve a comprehensive signage plan for a development that had unique requirements like Titus Landing does. And so that's, that is our second request for this evening that we'd like council to consider.
Okay. You want to continue?
No, we're, that's all, the only request we're going to make this evening, those two.
You might want to get everything all at once. I'm not sure. Is it, I mean, is, if that's covering most of what we covered today, I guess that's, that's okay too. But, uh, the only, it, the only thing that I found unacceptable, as I told you, is that the sixty-foot flag or the sixty-foot sign.
We want to take a, uh, we want to study that further before we ask you to take action on it.
Uh, studied a lot because I'm not sure I can go for that one. Uh, of course, it'll be a council decision. But I, I'll tell you what I do. If you want to have a seat for a minute and we'll do some.
Sure.
First, is there any questions for, for the applicant here? For the gentleman?
No.
No? Okay. Good. Ms. Pesaka, could you come up, please? I'm going to try and work this and then we'll all, we, feel free to join in with the light anytime I'm off, off your feelings at all. But I think we'll probably all feel the same way. Um, personally, you know, the, the mall is, uh, is proving itself already to be a very great thing for the city, and we want to cooperate wherever we can. Uh, some of these things, I think, are fairly easy to, uh, accept, uh, but we need you to put the plan together and, and do it in a, in a way that, uh, will work out just for everybody. That's all. You do your magic, is what I'm saying. Uh, I have, uh, there were several items, uh, the Harleys being put out, that I think the original ordinance was meant for vehicles being cars and trucks and so forth. Uh, Harleys are something that really will attract people just to see them. And it will be a draw for, for, uh, not only the mall, but for our area. Uh, so I don't have a problem with that one. Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
No? Okay. Um, the signage, you have need for, uh, several types of signs. The blade signs, I see no problems at all with, with, with that. Is everybody familiar with what he was talking about? Just you walking in, it's this way, uh, so that you know what stores are up ahead of you. You don't have to go out and look at the sign in front. And, and there are other specifics in, in, uh, wall signs and so forth that have to be looked at. Um, does anybody have any issues with asking, what we're going to ask for is an advisory, uh, advisory for this. Um, the comprehensive plan sounds, uh, for this particular zoning, which is, uh, you know, the plan will be for everyone in, every zoning of that type in Titusville that comes in the future. Right now, that's the only one of that type we have. Is that correct?
The only urban village, yes, sir.
Yes, okay. So right, we're, we're talking now about that one, but we also have to consider that there will be other, hopefully, maybe, urban village-type things coming in. Uh, and they do have permission, they have three roads that they're on, uh, Harris, Harrison, US One, and, uh, Hopkins. Uh, they do have the ability to put pole signs out there now, I understand. Is that, is that correct? I'm sorry, I shouldn't be talking into this.
Yes, sir. They have, um, they have gotten variances to actually increase the number of signs on the streets themselves.
So this could be part of that comprehensive plan?
Ye- yes, sir. We can come back to council with some options on putting together a sign plan.
The, the only one I'm not comfortable with, and I'm not sure if this was said with a straight face or not, uh, is a, uh, there was some talk of putting up a very tall sign so that people, uh, businesses on Hopkins or facing Hopkins could be seen at US One. And, uh, Mr. Kaiser did, uh, some numbers on it. You came up with what, sir, would be necessary?
Well, that was a specific request of the owner of the Harley Davidson because he has a high ground sign down at, um, at his dealership in Palm Bay. So that, that specific sign is in the range of about sixty feet. And, and my calculations would say that that would be what would be necessary to be able to see over bells from US One in this case as well.
I, I, I find that very interesting and somewhat amusing because if you have it sixty feet up in the air and it's on Hopkins, nobody's going to see it on Hopkins, coming down Hopkins because the thing's sixty feet up in the air. And I don't know how many people are going to be able to see it from US One when they're going fifty or sixty miles, well, forty or fifty miles. Uh, Dan, you're, leave it alone. You'll, you'll, you'll be followed home. Be careful. Get his number.
We would want to put together some exhibits to be able to better represent what that means.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just warning you. I'm letting you know upfront that that would be a different one to sell in this community. And I explained to you why the, our, our history says, a lot of people are troubled by anything over a certain height. But, uh, so that's not one that, uh, I'm particularly in favor of, but if anybody else is, nobody seems to think that's a good idea. Uh, correct? No?
Yeah, I, I think when we had talked earlier, I think he's going to go back and kind of talk and come up with a somewhat of a plan before bringing that before us. If that's correct.
Yeah, and that's fine. I'm, I'm just stating.
Cliff Aiken and I spoke about it, um, after I met with all of you, and we decided that we didn't want to present that as something for your consideration tonight.
Probably a good idea, but I just wanted to put it out there to make sure we're all on the same.
But we did want to definitely advance those other two issues because those are, um, things that we need to expedite.
So, uh, okay. Well, what we need at this point, and city manager, help me with this, is an advisability from staff on these items?
I think we already have it, sir. From the way you took us through that, we have what we need to, to come back to council with advisability.
Okay. Uh, we, we, we don't need any vote on that? Okay. You got what you want. Or most of it, anyway.
All right.
Now, we, we love the project and, uh, we certainly want to support it, uh, anywhere we can. Certain areas, a little bit difficult, certain things. Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we are on, what are we on? Oh, consent agenda. That's it. Okay. Uh, clerk, are there any cards on this?
No, sir.
Are there any members of council that want to pull anything on this consent agenda? I hear none. Uh, we, uh, I'll accept a motion to approve, uh, items A, B, C, D, and E.
I'll move to approve items A through E.
And any, uh, second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Uh, city manager, would you read the items, please?
Yes, sir. Consent agenda item 8A. Approve the interlocal agreements between the City of Titusville and Brevard County Property Appraiser and the Brevard County Tax Collector for services related to stormwater billing non-ad valorem assessment and authorize the mayor to sign the two agreements. Consent agenda item 8B. Approve and execute the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen School Board of Brevard County SRO Program Agreement and required budget amendments. Consent agenda item 8C. Approve the ranking of the firms and authorize staff to proceed with contract negotiations with Kane Associates of Orlando, Florida, who's ranked number one, to provide planning and consulting services to conduct a visioning exercise and, and update the city's comprehensive plan with possible amendments to the land development regulations. And if no agreements are reached, terminate negotiations with the number-one-ranked firm and enter into negotiations with the second-ranked firm. Consent agenda item 8D. Approve submittal of the community planning technical assistance grant to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for the purposes of bringing, uh, the city's comprehensive plan into compliance with the Pearl of Flood requirements specified in section one sixty-three point three one seven eight two F, Florida statutes. Consent agenda item 8E. Approve and award the independent audit services contract subject to the resolution of contract terms by the city attorney and city manager for the period of three years with two option, two optional one-year renewals to James Moore Certified Public Accountants and Consultants at a price of two hundred and one thousand dollars for the initial three-year term and in the amounts of seventy-one and seventy-three thousand dollars respectively for the optimal re- renewal, the optional renewals, for a total cost of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Um, next, we would vote, but I'm not sure, should we wait in this case or just go ahead and vote?
I think it's this type of county.
Oh, we're missing, yeah. Okay, well, we'll, we'll go ahead and vote on it. We have a motion already and a second. All, all those in, uh, in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And the opposed, like sign. Passes almost unanimously. One being absent at this point. Um, okay. Next item is ordinances, uh, second reading, public hearing and related action. City attorney, would you like to read the rules and the ordinances? Or, ordinance nine A when you get there?
Right. Nine A and B will be legislated. The quasi-judicial will be item C, so I might read the rules after item B for quasi-judicial.
Okay, so.
Ordinance number fifteen, two thousand seventeen. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending chapter twenty-eight zoning of the Code of Ordinances and Land Development Regulations, specifically amending Article Four Use Table and Section twenty-eight seventy-two Assisted Living Facility to permit assisted living facilities within the shoreline mixed-use district and to amend conditions related to development of assisted living facilities within specified zoning districts, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, for an effective date, and for incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of this request five to one. There were concerns expressed by the Planning and Zoning Commission members, including hurricane evacuation, the elderly being too close to the water, safety concerns of patients, and the use being incompatible with the US One corridor study. Based upon a citizen's request, on fourteen February two thousand seventeen, council provided advisability to include assisted living facilities as a use in the SMU zoning district. The proposed ordinance amends the zoning use table to include assisted living facilities as a, as a limited use within SMU based upon the criteria currently in place in the R2, R3, HM, and DMU zoning districts, where the property is less than one point five acres and located on a collector or artery roadway. Where these conditions are not met, an assisted living facility may be considered as a conditional use.
Ms. Pesaka, you have a presentation on this?
No, sir. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Pesaka on this? Uh, she had a, member Nelson, are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Hmm? Um.
We do have cards on this, sir.
We do? Okay. Let's, uh, open the public hearing and hear the cards.
Danny Treader and then Woody Rice.
Uh, mayor, city council, the last time I was here, I approached y'all about, uh, doing assisted living in the shoreline. I was so excited, I just ran through my presentation. Tonight, I'm going to try to, uh, slow down a little bit and, uh, bring up some points that, uh, were the planning zonings concerned. I'm sorry I didn't show up to that meeting. Um, I, I just wanted to start out by, um, picture yourself having to take a parent or loved one to a nursing home or assisted living facility. This is a situation many of us have dealt with already, um, and most of us will eventually walk through in life. Historically, the thought of entering a traditional nursing home and assisted living facility brings a lot of fear and trepidation to everyone involved. Uh, with a family member and friends and different, uh, family people who, that I've met, I've, I've had the occasion to go to, uh, all our facilities in Titusville, I believe. I've probably logged in over sixteen hundred visits, um, that I can calculate, probably more like eighteen hundred. The latest statistics show that elderly care facilities cannot be built fast enough to keep up with the rise in demand. The generation of the baby boomers and their parents are approaching this time of life. Tonight, I would like you to imagine a completely different experience, an experience where you, as a caregiver, will feel peaceful and even proud to providing a living situation where your loved one will be honored and pampered while receiving top-notch care from qualified caregivers. All this for approximately the same price point of traditional facilities. Um, I would like to bring this new and unique approach to elderly care to Titusville. A facility that mirrors more of a resort-style type of living, complete with views of the Indian River, with independent living, assisted living, memory care. Um, in this facility, um, mirrors a facility in Palm Bay that I have visited and I discussed with you the last time. They have theaters, fitness room, steam rooms, hot tub, heated pool, roof, you know. They don't have a roof garden, but I'd like to, uh, approach that. They have hair salons and I have the, you know, have chapels there, library, computer room, and, uh, a boat dock, uh, facility there. Um, I feel, this also, uh, dining there is not the traditional, uh, that you've seen in other, uh, nursing home facilities. Uh, they have menus with, uh, you know, four or five different items. The, the person staying there has that ability to pick what they want, not, you know, we're having meatloaf on Tuesday and that's it, um, type of situation. Um, where this is located is, is on the shoreline. The facility allows, um, may I have more time?
Absolutely. I'm not sure we even need to.
How much more time?
How much more time?
Uh, I would say five, three to five minutes more.
Five minutes?
Yeah, that would be good.
I made a question to five more minutes for Ms. Pesaka.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And the opposed, like sign. Pass unanimously, go for it.
Um, I just want you to think of, um, a facility that, you know, has beautiful views of the Indian River, um, uh, will have, um, you know, a pool and, uh, recreational facilities outside. All these people are not in the, you know, the last, you know, week of their lives. A lot of people are in the memory care, um, independent living, and they still have a lot of life to live, and some still even drive, you know. So as far as, you know, a place where, you know, they can view the rocket launches, where they can go out and see dolphins and manatees and eagles and ospreys flying, and actually even fishing from, uh, a dock, uh, that we're trying to get installed. And there's a lot of ru- room options. It's not like that traditional two hundred and twenty square feet or so with two beds in it. It's, you know, I've given you some floor plans of what they have in Palm Bay. It's like five hundred and twelve square feet, a bedroom, a living room, uh, kitchenette, uh, just, uh, you know, feeling of, you know, home. You know, they can bring their own furniture. They, in fact, a lot of people do. They, they bring all the things that make them happy, from recliners to, you know, all that. They can bring their, their own furniture, uh, to their. So, um, the style of living affords couples to age gracefully together. There's a lot of There's a lot of couples now, you know, it used to be just the woman would live, you know, you know, the husband died five years, 10 years earlier, but a lot of times the husband and wife and, you know, lived together and, you know, in one of the properties I manage, there's a man named Stan, he was in World War II. And it touched me so amazingly, his wife had to go into Benton House and she, she just couldn't be at home anymore. And, you know, he could have lived, stayed in the condo, he went with her. He, he wasn't gonna let his wife be alone. And, you know, in fact, you know, it just reminds me of what all of us should do as men, you know, wife gets, you know, go with her. And so I was just, you know, amazed by that, you know, that a man would do that. And this development is like one minute away from Titus Landing's where all the parish facilities will be, so it's very close to that. There'll be a shuttle bus type situation for them to go to their various doctors. And it's about seven minutes away from the hospital. I know planning and zoning had some concerns, the hurricane evacuation, which is a good concern. The building in Palm Bay is built to hurricane standards that they, when they saw that the hurricane was coming at 1:40, they didn't evacuate. They actually accepted people coming into their facility because of the hurricane standards it was built by. So as far as, they had another concern that it's too close to the water, and I can understand that one, but there's many safeguards that are built in. The memory care has doors, lock codes, key fob, you know, cameras, there's various gates and fences that would, you know, protect them from getting to the water. In Palm Bay, they are also on the water and they have memory care there and they have, you know, no problems with anybody drowning or anything. In fact, in, in this type of development, there's hundreds of state rules and guidelines that the state requires of, you know, for safety and recreation and all the things that need to make these places safe. As far as, I brought Mr. Rice here tonight, if you have any questions, and I think he's gonna discuss a little bit about the purpose and intent of the shoreline, is that correct, Woody, or should I go?
Just uses.
Just uses. And as far as, you know, if you read the shoreline mixed-use, it basically, the shoreline mixed-use district is, is designed as a special district to protect the substantial public interest of the Indian River, Washington Avenue corridor, based upon historical and existing land use commitments. It is the most, it is the intent of the district to encourage and enhance a mixed residence, public and semi-public use. You know, it talks about restaurants being in there, professional business, medical dental offices, banks, financial institutes, hotels, motels, and anything existing within the shoreline now. Even bed and breakfasts are allowed in there. So as far as I understand planning and zoning's concerns, I wish I would have been there to address them. And if you have any questions, I'd like to, myself or Mr. Rice could maybe answer some of your concerns if you have them.
We seem to have some questions. Mr. Diesel, Member Diesel.
I don't know that I could say there really questions. Last time this was brought up, I said what I'm gonna say now is I respectfully disagree with the planning and zoning. I look at two guys here that do some tremendous planning and I have great confidence in you. We have Titusville Towers down there on the water. Hurricane evacuations are taken care of very well by our city and our, our people. I don't have any concerns and, you know, you have this typical concerns, you know, they're near water. Well, you know, my mom was in one along Knox McCray, well, I guess I'll stay away from the name of it, but, you know, they were concerned about her getting out and going out onto Knox McCray. If you get out of the facility, it doesn't matter if it's water or highway or road, that's a problem. So the safety factors that I know you will include give me confidence and I'm, I'm quite supportive.
Member Nelson?
I just wanted to say that if the facility you're talking about building is anything like the photograph you gave us or the drawing you gave us, it should be something that the citizens of Titusville are proud of. This is a beautiful facility and we'd love to have our parents and hopefully one of these days maybe my kids will put me there, but maybe sooner than later, but it's someplace where, you know, I think our elderly population could be happy and content and I think we could be proud of it.
Thank you.
So.
Go forward.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll, I'll speak after we have the other presentation. Is, is, are you going to make a presentation?
Yes, sure.
As part of your presentation, so why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, Woody Rice, 505 Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida. I just sort of like to look at, at some of the uses and some of the uses that are allowed today, residential's one of them, and medical office is another. Well, that's sort of what ACLU has residential medical offices put together. So those are already allowed and permitted in here. Let me go over some of the other interesting things that Mr. Treader did bring up, such as hotels and bed and breakfasts and restaurants and all those other fine types. It is mixed use, that is the definition of mixed use. What I found fascinating is that it's okay for people that are visiting our community to come and enjoy our shoreline and go to the hotel or motel and restaurants and enjoy it, and that's great. I think it is a great asset for the city of Titusville. But when it comes to maybe some of our long-term residents that have served our community for 50 years, have going into their twilight years, you know, that we would shun away from allowing them to relocate to a place that's tranquil. I'm, I'm very fortunate, I get to, I live on the water and I'm marveled every day that I see the moon come up or see dolphins and then look at God's creations of what I'm looking at and realize where I'm sitting downtown Titusville and looking at just the marvel. And nothing greater as you get older, looking at and contemplating your next life and your afterlife and, and where you're going to heaven and looking at it, just the marvels of what God has created. Why would we turn that down for our citizens that have served our community for such a long time? So I, I, I think this is a good fit, a great fit. And then when it comes to not being compatible with your corridor study, I, I find it sort of fascinating that I, I know your staff pretty well, and I don't think your staff would ever propose something that's not compatible with the comprehensive plan or corridor study or any of our studies. So when staff presents something saying, yes, this is compatible and this is the way we go, I, I think you're on good footings and good grounds. So we're just asking for your support tonight for our long-term citizens of Titusville because this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards?
No, sir.
Okay. Does anybody else want to speak?
Sir, I would like to recognize.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, in relation to what's being brought before us, I believe that under our strategic objectives, we discuss quality of life. And from my best experience working within the medical community, what I believe that we owe to our citizens who are both elderly, senior, and possibly dying are three things as a community. One of which is the ability to maintain their dignity, to maintain their safety, and to maintain a community where those individuals are valued. I, I believe that those fit our strategic objective of quality of life. And as such, I, I wholeheartedly believe that the location of a potential facility is very much kind of aligned with the zoning, but also for the intent of the city to meet our objectives. So in that sense, I feel responsible with the proposed, with the proposed zoning and the proposed use.
Okay. I guess it's my turn. You know, when I saw the five to one on planning and zoning, I certainly have a lot of respect for those people and, and I had some concern looking at that and saying, well, maybe they have some points here. And frankly, though, after I got into it a bit and it was pointed out to me about the tower, the housing authority, beyond the water, and I live very close to that, I've never heard of any drownings or any accidents that wouldn't happen in a, in a house, for instance, in that facility. And I know particularly with, with our last experience about a condominium being, having to evacuate during that storm, that I think this, these facilities probably have a better plan of evacuating than multifamily or condominiums would have, so I don't think that's valid As I said, being close to the water, safety concern, yeah, I guess it, it is, but, you know, the experience with the tower says it's not a problem, any more than any other thing, as Member Diesel pointed out, going on a road or, or anything else. So at this point, I, I see no, no issue with it myself, so. Any other comments anybody would like to, to make? Hearing none. We've been through, I guess I can close the, the public hearing at this point and ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion, motion to approve ordinance number 15 dash.
Thank you.
Did you get it?
I think so.
Okay.
Motion to approve ordinance number 15 dash 2017 relating to the assisted living facilities in the shoreline mixed-use district. So.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
We'll need, we'll need a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. I always forget that.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yeah.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
You got it, guys. B, 9B, ordinance 16, 2017, extending the moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries. Will you read the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 16, 2017, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, extending the temporary moratorium on the establishment or operation of any medical marijuana treatment centers, medical marijuana dispensaries, or medical marijuana facilities within the city of Titusville, imposing ordinance 1, 2017, and providing for an effective date.
In November 2016, Florida voters approved the constitutional amendment two allowing medical marijuana use within the state. On January 10th, 2017, council adopted ordinance number 1 dash 2017 to establish a temporary moratorium on the establishment and the operation of medical marijuana facilities to permit sufficient time to develop regulations. The moratorium will expire on July 9th, 2017. State regulations relating to medical marijuana have not been completed yet by either the Florida Legislature or the Department of Health. As additional time is needed to review these rules after they are completed and finalize a proposed ordinance relating to medical marijuana, staff is proposing the moratorium be extended for an additional 180 days. Should the ordinance be ready before the, the extension, the moratorium can be removed, removed in sunset date.
Thank you, sir. Staff, is there a presentation or just answers?
Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Yes, we do. Member Diesel. First, Member Diesel, and then we'll recognize you, Vice Mayor.
Ms. Saka, what is the projected timeframe for coming up with our ordinance?
Well, we have read carefully the legislation that has been not signed into law yet. And if it were signed into law, which the governor has stated his intent to do so, it actually limits perhaps even the need to have an ordinance because as, as it stands right now, it preempts the regulation of cultivation and processing of marijuana to the state. So that issue would not be in our purview. And it allows local governments to either ban dispensing facilities, and if they do not choose to ban dispensing facilities, then they may not place any restrictions on the number of dispensing facilities allowed, and they may not adopt any regulations for dispensing facilities that are more restrictive than the ordinances regulating pharmacies.
Okay, so we can move forward, I mean, you're, you're getting ready to do that, but like you said, we may not need an ordinance, but then there could be some addressing of the council as far as ordinance or voting or however that would come down, decision-making on the number or maybe not allowing at all?
Yes, sir, that's, well, we're not allowed to do the number. It, it's a, it's a one-question quiz. You either ban it or you do, or you regulate them as you do pharmacies. What we would like to do is to wait for the, the governor to move forward if he decides to sign this, give us an opportunity to evaluate it, bring it back to you. And I think the question, if I understand the legislation, is do you want to ban them or do you want to regulate them as you do pharmacies? And right now pharmacies are permitted as retail uses, and the only restriction that the legislation currently holds is that they can't be within 500 feet of schools.
Okay, thank you.
So we'd like that opportunity and I, I'm, I'm thinking that we can bring it back perhaps even as early as the first meeting in July, maybe the second meeting, depending on how long it takes the governor to do what he's gonna do.
I think we all agree that we wanna, you know, be very careful.
Yes.
We wanna do this right. We don't wanna make a decision and then say, gosh, we shouldn't have done that, all the while knowing over 70% of our voters approve this.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, okay, I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards on this?
No, sir.
Close the public hearing. Discussion by council or a motion?
I can make that motion.
Okay.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Motion to adopt the ordinance and extending the temporary moratorium on the establishment or operation of any medical marijuana treatment center.
Can I have a second?
Say it.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Roll call again. See, I do forget it every time. At least I'm consistent.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yeah.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is a conditional use permit, number 2 dash 2017.
Mayor, would you?
What was that?
Mayor, I'll read the rules for quasi judicial.
Say again, I'm sorry.
I'll read the rules for quasi judicial.
Oh, yes, please.
During this public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on this quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table in the back of the council chamber. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council, staff representatives, and such other representatives as authorized by council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council, sign an oath card.
Yes, sir.
If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that does wish to speak on this item, please submit a card at this time.
Good thing he's quick.
I've never seen him move that. City clerk, has this agenda item been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Have any council members visited the site or spoken to any members of the public regarding this item to be reviewed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I guess we open the, oh, staff report, is there any report from staff?
Yes, sir, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action 4-0. This request includes the approximately 4.26 acre property located at 1450 Harrison Street located- located at northeast corner of Barna Avenue and Harrison Street. Property is currently developed within, within approximately 58,000 square foot building, formerly a supermarket and associated parking lot and loading areas. Stormwater treatment for the site is located offside of the property to the east of the Dollar General store at 1400 Harrison Street. The applicant is proposing to remodel the existing building on, on the property to accommodate a proposed church. The include, the included concept plan indicates the existing access points will not be modified and will remain at the current locations on Barna and Harrison Streets. Existing cross-access to the Dollar General store will also remain in its current configuration. Concept plan is attached as the staff report. Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions that you may have concerning this wonderful action.
Yes, Ms. Busaka.
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to go over briefly the staff report that's in your agenda package. We, the concept plan does show the existing access points will not be modified. The comprehensive plan consistency, the staff finds that the use, location, and facilities proposed are consistent with the commercial high intensity future land use designation. The staff does not believe that the proposed church should generate any nuisance factors such as noise, odor, smoke, flare, electrical interference, or mechanical vibrations. The proposed use has been reviewed compared to the landscape requirements, and there are screening and buffering requirements that will be required as part of the review when this redevelopment goes forward. The staff believes that the proposed church will be similar in intensity and hours of operation to other commercial uses in the vicinity. And in addition to that, the applicant is not proposing to change the scale of the existing buildings, and the CUP requirements include that we set out a schedule of district regulations for churches, and those six include the capacity to proceed through the conditional use process if the proposed maximum occupancy is greater than 400 persons there going forward with that. It shall meet the minimum requirements of section 28, 123 if a childcare facility is proposed, no childcare facility is proposed. Offices shall be limited to no more than 25% of the total floor area, in this case the proposal is a 3.5% of that area. The, there shall be a type B buffer required, and that will be, made sure that that happens, staff will ensure that. There shall not be vehicular access from a local street, in this case vehicular access is, does not include a local street, and onsite parking will be provided as required. There are five conditions that staff has recommended, and I'd like to comment on those. The condition number one is the storage space should be used for the, only for the use of the church. The second condition relates to a traffic study. Our development engineer has actually completed a preliminary traffic study and, excuse me, and finds that at buildout, the Grove site will not increase the level of service on the Harrison and Barna above the approved level of service. And so, it is, and this is even assuming the buildout of the Titus Landing facility. So, the engineer has concluded that no further traffic analysis is needed at this time and supports the removal of condition number two. So, the recommendation from staff is condition number one on the storage space, condition number three on the landscape hedge along the northeast parking stalls, and a six-foot opaque visual screen, a childcare facility and school or separate uses that each require a conditional use permit, we wanna make sure that they're aware of that, and finally, that any site-related improvements, except those necessary to comply with Florida Accessibility Code, which are required as part of this conditional use permit, will not be required to be completed prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the office space. And that we are requiring, we are suggesting that the office be allowed to go in, and then the other site-related improvements such as the landscaping, et cetera, would be required when the actual sanctuary is approved. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
You have any questions? I see none. Or do you have one?
Yeah. So, I see in here, like, they have proposed for the sanctuary, for storage space, so what happens if they change their mind and they want to increase or decrease? Do they have to come back, or how does that process work?
They do not, based on the conditions that the staff has outlined. Now, if council were to add a condition that tied them specifically to those numbers, then they would, but the staff is assuming that there's, this is flexibility and just a general plan.
Okay. All right. I think that's all for right now.
Any other questions? I see none. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, will you call the cards? Applicants' cards, please.
Dustin Samms?
You did good with the prayers.
Well, good evening, and I'm just glad to be back. Dustin Samms, 1105 Santa Cruz, Titusville, Florida. Just wanted to make sure that, to see if there was any questions that need to be answered, but we're excited about taking this, this building that has been empty for 20 years and making some significant changes. The landscape, my personal favorite is the landscape plan, so if you guys get a chance to peruse that, it's gonna be a jewel there in the center of town, but that's all I have. I'd like to yield the remainder of my time to the Honorable Gentlemen. Brad, where you at? So, anyway, we have nothing else to add to it.
You can't tell the difference either.
Yeah, they're looking good. Thank you.
The next card, please.
Brad Russell.
All right, I'm the, I'm Brad Russell, 1158 10 Barna Avenue, here in Titusville, Florida. I'm the lead pastor of the Grove Church, and I'm extremely excited to have the opportunity to continue to expand and reach our community here in Titusville, and see just revitalization of our city with this facility. I guess my only concern is when it's done, it's gonna distract attention from the Titus Landing area to the Grove Church, and so, we apologize for that in advance.
You have motorcycles, too.
But we're very excited for the opportunity and just the, the privilege God's given us to serve this city. I'm here, we have Chris Harvey here with us from Lloyd Construction, kinda representing us on the construction side, so if there's any questions about the phases or how it's gonna be done.
Mr. Harvey, did you wanna come up and speak as part of their presentation?
Good evening, Chris Harvey, 1545 Selkirk Avenue, Titusville, Florida. I'm here on behalf of Lloyd Contracting and the Grove Church relative to looking to revitalize this building that sat vacant now for some 18, 20 years. Those of us that grew up around here, we saw it come together, I think originally as Super X Drugs, and evolved into Goodings, and I remember as a kid, having spent most of my life here, that being my first encounter with a lobster tank and, and live lobster. So...
Memories.
It was, it was a treat to go down there and, and step away from food world and some of the other places. But in, in years past, we, we know this building to, to have become somewhat of an eyesore. And Lloyd Contracting is excited to work together with the Grove Church and resurrect this, this building into something that, that'll serve our community and that we can all be proud of. And, Member Johnson, you know, while we're in the audience...
You got a promotion, Chris.
I, I, I told Brad he couldn't have a sign.
He didn't get it?
Yeah, no, I got you, but I wanted to tell you. I, I told Brad he couldn't have a sign that was visible from, from US 1, so...
Okay.
I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
I, oh, yes, we got several. Member Stokel?
Yep, I just had a question for you guys. Are you guys okay with all the recommendations that the city has provided? Are you guys good? Yeah? Yep.
We've worked together with staff, and we don't have any objection with, with the four of the five requirements. Item number two, as Ms. Busaka brought up, we, we met with staff together, Woody Rice and myself, met with KB, the city engineer, and, and with his help, we feel like we're able to overcome that, and respectfully would like that to be not a condition.
Okay. We're excited.
Member Diesel?
Again, perhaps not questions, I just think it's appropriate, we meet with city manager before meetings, and in that meeting, I, I write my notes down, and I have notes on, on everything, and this particular segment, I wrote not only yes, but thank you. I didn't just, you know, come up with that. I mean, I wrote that a long time ago, not only yes, but thank you. We've certainly had some tremendous improvements in our city, and we're growing tremendously, but let's face it, there, you know, the mall was certainly what we would call an albatross around our neck at one point, and certainly Goodings ranks right up there as an albatross around our neck. And I do, I do feel like God's hand is in this, because I never in my life thought, in my lifetime, I'd see somebody wanna buy that thing. So, I, I do, I really think that, you know, I, I wanna know who the heck had the guts to walk in that thing first, because I would not. But again, I, not only on my notes, yes, but thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, next card, please.
The last card is Woody Rice.
Yeah, my sentiment's exactly, you know, many people in Titusville prayed over the years that this building would be occupied, and we didn't know that God would speak so directly in making a church, you know, so I thought, I thought that was sort of fascinating. But I, I wanna thank KB, 'cause he did step up the plate this week and helped us. He had the number for the mall, he had all the, the data, and he went above and beyond and made this work where the church had a, something that might have been unknown to have known, and that made a big difference, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Could I, excuse me, yes, I know you. I, I just have to say this, KB told me that he had to go home to use his personal model, computer model, to do this. I don't know of anybody that has a personal computer model about transportation at home. Oh, all right. Yeah, but you work from home.
I have a lot of models, but I don't have a transportation one. KB is a PhD in traffic engineering, so he's a very unique individual, and adds a lot of talent, so, we really appreciated that.
I just hope his home was in Florida, 'cause it might have been a ruse to go on vacation.
In Titusville, he's a Titusvillian.
Okay, that's good to hear. I just, home was in Washington, he took a little trip. Okay. There are no other cards at this point, there are no other, I'll close the public hearing, discussion amongst council. Anybody have, wanna say anything?
No.
I see none, but I will. I wanna say not only thank you, but thank God, 'cause that, that building has, has been, as, has been said, just an albatross around our necks for years and years, and it was an odd situation, because Goodings had a lease on it with the owner that went for 20 years, even though the building was not occupied, and they were getting about half a million dollars a year, and most people don't know that, what do you probably do? Just for it to sit there, the owner of the building, so they had no reason to sell it, and consequently, everybody would be yelling about getting somebody in there. They didn't wanna sell it. You couldn't, you couldn't get anybody in there, so it, it finally got past that stage, it took 20 years, but, and now you're gonna take it and put good use to it, and I, I appreciate that very much. Okay, I'll accept a motion on, to approve conditional use permit number 2 dash 2017 with conditions as presented by staff.
So moved.
Can you do, can she do that, if you wanna hear the whole thing?
I'll do that.
That does it, okay. I just wanna make sure we got the...
We got, I think we have it.
Yeah. I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any...
Yes.
That gets me every time.
It hurts from my butt.
Okay, we had, everybody say yes in favor. Anybody opposed, like, sign. Passes unanimously, gentlemen, ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no first readings, we have no old business, new business. Mr. City Manager?
On 28th February 2017, council approved staff's recommendation to hold the 2017 Red, White &amp; Boom Fourth of July Celebration at Sandpoint Park and Marina Park. On 1 April 2017, staff commenced its annual fundraising drive to local businesses and residents through direct mailing and utility billing notices. Despite our record outreach to over 200 businesses and 35,000 utility billing notices, this year's funding efforts are significantly behind previous year's levels. As, as of the beginning of June, we've raised $9,500 towards our $18,000 goal needed to adequately fund this year's Fourth of July event. Based on current levels and absence of significant uptick in the levels of donation, our fundraising efforts will fall short of the amount needed to hold the event. Staff is requesting council authorize to cover the remaining shortfall of the Fourth of July city operate, city operating funds not to exceed $7,500.
Any questions on this or discussion? If not, I'll accept the motion. To authorize the, up to $7,500 for the fireworks from the general fund.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'd like to...
Yes, sir.
...further discussion, I'd be remiss. I'd go home upset with myself if I didn't, because I have spoken early and often about fundraising, and sometimes when we step in and we're paying for things that need to be fundraised, and, and in this case, don't misunderstand me, I'm gonna vote yes, and we're gonna have Fourth of July, and we're gonna have fireworks, but when you come up with that kind of shortfall in fundraising, at least at the high school level, you step back and say, we gotta come up with another fundraiser. So, apparently sending out the, hey, we need some money on water bills or whatever we did, and businesses didn't work so well. So, that being said, I, I certainly am, am all for, and we will do what we have to do to make this an exciting Fourth of July, and would never think of not doing that. But along this, and not just this event, other events that we're calling fundraised, we really need to get serious about fundraising. And that, again, probably comes from a high school background and all kinds of people can get mad at me, but we've gotta raise the funds for these events, and in this case, we certainly will vote yes to get that done.
You make a good point, and, you know, this has been going on forever, that I know of, and it, it runs in cycles according to sometimes economy, some other issues, but if we can come up with other methodologies, or staff can, for next year, that would, that would probably help. Maybe they're just getting used to the message in their water bills, so. You will consider that, sir, in the future?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so, we need a, a motion to, well, we, we didn't do the motion, did we?
Yeah, I think we did.
Okay, okay. That's, that's why I'm reading the same thing over again, I'm saying, I just read that. Okay, all others in, any, any more discussion, first off? No? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like, sign. Passes unanimously. Petitions and requests from the public present, is there any members of the public who would like to come forth, ma'am? No? You have to come up here.
Good evening, and I was not planning to speak tonight, but since you're willing to let me talk to you...
We do need your name for the record, ma'am.
Certainly. My name is Lale Rapari, 7565 Yegre Drive, and the reason I came here today was to learn how the system works and how I can come next time more prepared to talk about something that is very dear to my heart. I'm a very enthusiastic nature lover, and I know that there is a statue that encourages people to have Florida-friendly landscaping in their backyards. people to have Florida-friendly landscaping in their backyards, but I have come to the conclusion that this statue is not very well-known. It's not really out there and I was trying to find a way, I hope this is the right place, to make this statue more known to people, to encourage them to have native plants in their backyards, to have, to become more aware of the fragile ecosystem that we have, to think more about finding ways with, with their families, with their neighbors, to have an ecosystem, an eco-friendly landscape, use less chemicals, use less water in this direction. So, and I came today just to learn how to go about bringing these things to your attention.
Very good, thank you. And what you do is just what you just did.
Well, thank you.
That's going out on, to televisions and is replayed on, on the TV in people's houses. So if you wish to come again, please do.
Certainly, maybe.
And you don't have to wait till the last one. You could do it up in the, one of the, on the first one.
Maybe, maybe like-minded people who hear me could get encouraged to arrange some, I don't know, meetings, some discussions, somehow try to find a way to do better in these respects because we really need to review certain limitations that we have in coming closer to preserving nature, the pollinators, the water reservoirs that we have. And this is what I'm here for.
Very good, ma'am. We thank you for coming up.
Thank you so much for letting me talk.
Sure.
Forgot my microphone again. We do have a environmental board and I don't know, I think it's probably full right now. But if you were to put an application in when there's a vacancy, we could consider you for that board. And I think that, that would be great for you.
Certainly, I would love to do that. Thank you.
And the other option is laid from the water department.
Yeah. Maureen.
Maureen. If, if you were, could you put her in contact with Maureen? She's working with native plants and reducing her water consumption.
Sure.
I would assume Maureen would probably enjoy having some help.
Sure.
Thank you. The gentleman who spoke before the board, I think he was a member of the environmental community. I was very surprised, very, very pleasantly surprised to, because I wasn't expecting, you know, to hear these things today. So I also asked him if there would be a way to contact him and learn more.
That would be good. That would be good.
Well, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor and council reports, you have my report attached. Any council members that want to make a report of any kind? Number six is that? Oh, that was the last one there? Yeah. I see no lights. I thought that was the last one, that was my fault. Go ahead, Dan, please.
Not a lot, and I probably should have said it earlier when she was here, but Karen Conklin in the Space Museum on Pine Avenue. I actually got a tour of the, the facility yesterday and saw all the things that were in there. I was extremely impressed and I know most of us have an awful lot to do with the space program. I know my family came here in 1965 with the space program and it was kind of nice that my dad's picture was in there escorting the astronauts out to Apollo 11. I think there's a lot of people in this community that would be surprised how many pictures of, of their parents or grandparents are in there. That being said, I just think it's a hidden gem and, and I'm embarrassed to say I hadn't been there since they moved there. And it's got Smithsonian-like atmosphere. They've got a button in there that they push to launch John Glenn. I'm like, how did you get this and how is it not in the Smithsonian? So I just wanted to say that's an outstanding facility. I hope more people will go and see and Karen and the gentleman that spoke and I forgot his name, but they are doing a tremendous job down there.
Charlie Maureen. Any other members of council that want to? I see no lights. City Manager.
Yes, sir, we have one action item and one information item. We have done a review of our video security area within the customer service area and found it to be insufficient. So we would like to upgrade the current camera configuration and that upgrade is going to cost $7,750 to complete the, the upgrade. The funds are available within the information technology working capital account, so we request that council approve the attached budget amendment transferring $7,750 from the IT working capital account to the camera upgrade project account. And this is a safety issue or else we would have worked it through the normal budget cycle.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
I would move to.
$7,750.
$7,750 from the IT working capital account to the camera upgrade project account.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All, although, it scares me every time. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously.
Yes, sir, the one information item, because it does involve money, I issued an emergency procurement repair order this past week to repair a block's lateral sewage line on Harrison Street. We did, we're able to get three bids. The low bid was $47,050. We wanted to go ahead and get this project going because it is a connection to Titus Landing off of the medical facility. So the work will commence on the 19th of June. So we wanted to bring to your attention that we did have, we do have money in the water resources project account for such emergencies and I did issue an emergency work order in the sum of $47,050. Next, the, as you all attended, the grand opening of the Splash Park, what a wonderful event. And as I mentioned during the CRA board meeting tonight, about 10:30 this morning, I drove past the Splash Park and there were 11 vans of children there. And the park has been occupied since you cut the ribbon on Saturday morning at 10 o'clock. It's been occupied ever, every hour of every minute that it's open. So I appreciate the great community effort to bring that project to fruition. We still have two remaining items to complete on the park. It's the cell structures that will go in as well as the lighting. The holdup right now is the water table is so saturated of the ground, we can't get the flutters set. So we're going to have to wait till the ground dries out a little bit to get those done, which we were anticipating this week, but as you all are aware, it rained every day this week so far. So we're hopeful we can get that project done and complete as soon as possible. As you noted during the grand opening, there was some signage that was missing. That signage has been placed on the fence lines itself as well as different signages around the complex itself that describes the rules. So with that, subject to your question, that completes my report.
I just want to comment that, that was one of the most pleasurable things and fun things I have done since being on the board. I think the kids were just lighting, their faces were lighting up, they were having fun. And I did go there after you and I met Monday morning and it was just full, just absolutely full of happy little kids running around and their parents, not so happy, but running around. So I really appreciate, especially the effort the city manager put in on, on that whole thing. And again, as I said there, that wouldn't have happened without his effort. So thank you, Mr. City Manager. Jalen, go ahead.
Can I just add that I love the photograph of one police officer running through the water.
Yeah. There was more than one.
Well, okay.
We have video footage.
We have video footage, yes. They, they looked like they were having fun.
They were having a good time. They were challenging the fire department to do it, but they couldn't get them to go. It was fun. All right, anything else anybody would like to speak about? If not, I will declare this meeting. Sir?
Just as a reminder, council goes into recess. You won't be in session until the 11th of July will be your next meeting. So please enjoy your recess.
Thank you very much and you do, you enjoy our recess as well. I declare this meeting adjourned.